Serving in our military, keep them safe and out of harms way. We ask this in the name of Jesus, amen. Please be seated, let a clerk will you call the roll.
Mr. Brown, Ms. Carruth.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Here.
Mr. Tripp.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Westcott.
Here.
All present.
We have a quorum. Counsel in your package, you were provided copies of the minutes from our previous meetings. If there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
I would entertain a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Thank you. Jerry, you want to give us a financial report?
Counsel, financial report for June. General revenues were eight hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred fifty-two. That's five point two-three percent above our year-to-date projections today. Tax receipts were six ninety-nine seven oh four. Franchise fees and per minute was thirty-seven thousand one hundred seventeen. Expenditures were one million thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four. That's point six-five percent above our year-to-date projection. And we received two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four more received than expended. Street funds operations were a hundred and eighty thousand four seven thirty-nine. For June, we're point nine-two percent above our year-to-date projections. Sales tax receipts were four hundred and seventeen thousand four sixty-nine. The half-cent sales tax was forty-nine thousand five oh eight. Street fund expenditures, operationals, were three hundred and twenty-five thousand four oh nine. That is ten point seven percent above our projections. That does include Arkansas Study and the O Street project. Sales tax improvements, three thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars for engineering. On capital, we spent seventy-nine thousand fourteen dollars on a track home. Economic development, we set revenues were three hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-six with the new sales tax, five thousand sixty-six dollars was interest. Expenditures were seven hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-one. That was for the Arkansas Valley Alliance, where road improvement and the mowing. Capital assets, revenues three hundred and sixty-nine thousand five sixty-nine, hundred and seventy-one thousand two fifty-five was new sales tax, hundred and ninety-four thousand oh four was grant refund, and two thousand three hundred and ten dollars in interest. Expenditures were seven hundred and ninety-two thousand five ninety-one with Citicorp, Building R and M, Aquatic Center, Fire Department, Police Department, and Parks. Any questions?
Jerry, I have a question about the mayor.
The El Paso project, how close are we to having that paid off?
Seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay. At five hundred a year, is that?
Yes.
So, within the next twelve, eighteen months?
I was wanting to pay it off this year if we had the revenues, but it doesn't appear that we have it today.
And then there'll still be remaining, five years remaining of that, those tax receipts?
That's correct.
How much did he, how much did you say, Jerry?
How much for what?
How much is left on it?
Seven hundred and seventeen thousand.
Okay.
Wait a minute, Jerry, if you don't mind.
Nope.
Revenues year-to-date, is that on here compared to this time last year? Are we up or down? Or flat, maybe, hopefully?
The same period, I've got eight hundred and eighty-six thousand versus eight hundred and thirty-five thousand.
But that's June to June.
That's correct.
About year to year, because I'm hearing rumors that the Amazon tax might be coming in, or something's coming in that's helping us out a little bit?
No, we haven't changed.
That has, that hasn't changed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I just did a deal for the mayor today, and we're just flat, like we've been all along.
It's flat, so...
It was up in May, and a lot of people thought that was due to the Amazon. It would've been, because our receipts follow two months after the money is spent. And so, at Municipal League, that was the thinking, because everybody statewide, their revenues were up. In June, they went back down, so it's a little bit early to tell. And Amazon, because they did it voluntarily, they're only collecting on certain portions of their business. And so, that's where that's at. There's no way to, there's no way to figure that into anything.
Well, it would be foolish for us to start thinking, since it's so new, that it might continue anyway, since we don't even know.
When you voluntarily do something, you can voluntarily stop doing it.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And from the discussion at Municipal League, I don't hold out a lot of hope that the, we're going to get any help anytime soon at the state level. And I appreciated Steve Womack's comments a couple of weeks ago at the Chamber event. As everybody knows, he's a big, I mean, he's one of the leaders on the Internet Fairness Act, but he's got some stiff competition up there, too. So, we're basically on our own.
Where we get all of our money, or the biggest majority goes into administration. Last year, at six-thirty, I had receiveded five million nine hundred and sixteen thousand. This year, I've receiveded six million and fourteen thousand, so you're talking ninety thousand dollars difference.
In the big scheme of things, and the way our expenses are growing, that's not really enough money.
And without going detail to detail, that could've been a special thing from a land sale, or something, it doesn't have to be sales tax.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. The mayor's report, I think I'll keep just a few housekeeping items. After conferring with Chairman Dennis Boyd of the Planning Commission, and running by three or four very, very good candidates, if you're not one picked, that does not mean we don't have something good in mind for you. I'm nominating Steve Hubbard from Wright Out. He's a member of the historic district at this time. I want to move him to the Planning Commission. Chairman Boyd agreed with that, and I'm submitting that name now and requesting your confirmation.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor of confirming Mr. Hubbard, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Got a couple of requests that came in actually this morning by way of the Alliance. Their board has voted to ask your consideration for two projects. I'll take them one at a time. Request number one would be to use funds from the old Economic Development Fund that we have tried for so many years to find a project we could use it on, and let it not stop, or let it stop getting moldy in the bank. We have some gentlemen here tonight that have been working with the Alliance for quite some time. They want to establish a plant here to manufacture conveyor belt rollers. They have a lot of experience in it. Last week, you all, I believe, got access to their business plan, some notes from AEDC, a letter from their lender. They want to, what's proposed is that the Alliance donate to the city five acres of property, more or less, out on Tyler Road, and that the city use those economic development funds to build a twenty thousand square foot, basically a spec building, but to some extent customized to handle their workload, and lease it to them with a option for them to buy. Mr. Harville, or Robert, either one of you guys want to add anything? The Alliance Board voted, I believe unanimously today, to recommend that you consider that project.
(Inaudible).
No.
Can I say?
Brayton, would you grab that handheld and take it over to him? Excuse me, Mr. Ball.
Are you still crippled?
Yeah, I hate crippled. The only reason that I'm here is because I'm on transportation that I got from Mark Tripp. Thank you, Mark. I don't, I don't want to use it much longer. I'm afraid we're going to. I think, in a project like this, we've been working with it for four or five months. And we've, you've seen, you have seen the business plan? Did you, mayor, did you say they've seen their business plan?
Put on Dropbox.
Yeah, we've been with AEDC, they have met with AEDC, I've met with AEDC. One thing that impressed me in that meeting about four or five months ago was when AEDC said, "You have a business plan," and they just scooted over there in front of them. And they said, "Well, that's a good plan." And it is a good plan. Now, when you get into a, a deal like we're talking about with our land and with the city doing a building, what you have to do is make sure, number one, we want these people to succeed. If for any reason they don't, we have an asset that I feel like we can market. We can market as a spec building. So, I don't really believe, as far as the land that we are donating in this cause, that it won't do anything but help. Because at this particular place, we've been thinking about putting a spec building in anyway. We quite couldn't afford to put one in like we wanted, or the size of twenty thousand square feet. We've been talking about that. If you move economic development spec buildings are good to have, we're going to talk about another possibility tonight, probably. But it is an asset that we will have and that you will own. And we want them to grow. All tele, Allied Telephone started at a garage apartment in Fort Smith, Arkansas, and became a company employing twenty-seven thousand people. So, you never know how these things are going to work. I've met them, been with them, et cetera. They're, they're good young men, they're experienced, they have done it. They have people that have sold to their companies, they're, they're prospects for sale, a lot of them will be, be companies right here in Russellville, all over Arkansas, where they would sell their product. We decided to, today, to this morning, to go ahead and donate the land, pending the city want to participate in it. Is it anything you can lose in? I don't think so. Can you lose? Sometimes you can, but I don't think you can lose in this. This is done all over the country. And we don't have one now, and I think that we need one. But we're ready to mark, if that happens, for any reason, we end up with a building, whether we, it's a building that we know we can market. And twenty thousand square foot buildings you can market very well. We had one right now, it'd be full. Like, I've had three, three people in the last, I don't know whether they've done it or not, but three people in the last little over a year that was interested in a building about this size, but we didn't have one. I showed them some buildings, it was ten thousand square feet, it didn't work the way their configuration was made. So, that's really what it is. Spec buildings are one thing that a lot of people do. A lot of people that do what I do for a living have recommended spec buildings, and sometimes they didn't work. And I've seen a lot of people that did that, said, "You know, I better get my resume out." But most of the time, they do work. Any questions? Robert, do y'all want to say anything?
The only thing I would add to it is, is that this morning USDA, they passed unanimously approved the eighty, or the seventy percent guarantee for our loan. So, we've got approval through that as well. So, we've, we've been through chambers, and now through the USDA, and here we are today. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we adopt this.
I'll second. Motion, Mr. Wiley's second, Mr. George. You know, at this point, we're going to negotiate a thing, and we'll still bring it back to council for final approval. We've got a motion in a second, is there additional discussion?
Well, a little, a little bit on my part.
Okay.
Ms. Harris, you're recognized. It's just that, for some time back, I would look at our websites to see what sort of spec buildings or buildings that we had for industry, since everyone says we need jobs. And we, Russellville doesn't really have any, and this is an opportunity to build a spec building, for someone to put a building in. And if y'all go away, we still have the spec building. So, we have something to offer the next customer that may come along also. And I think later on, there may be a discussion for an additional building, and I hope that everybody keeps an open mind on that one also.
You're correct. It's, you know, a lot of cities, as Mr. Harville noted, and as you noted, are doing spec buildings. We happen to have the luxury of building one with it.
Because it's, it's really, it's really guarded, whether those recruiters are out here working for us. I'm defending us tonight, because I feel like we've been under fire lately. And, and knowing what I know, I mean, the group from Alabama, we have these, these people that are out there, but if they want to show us something, we really don't have a building that the city owns, or anyone owns, that we can immediately offer them. So, it further delays any type of activity that we might get going here. So, I see the opportunity right now to see two different buildings that can take place.
About fifteen years ago, we lost a big business to Conway because we didn't have a building to put them in.
So...
And I would add this, we were, we looked all over this area of buildings, and there is a huge gap from about eight thousand square feet to about fifty thousand square feet. There's not really anything in between us. And a lot of small manufacturers like ourselves, I mean, we, we don't need fifty thousand square feet.
No.
We need...
Ten or twelve.
...business to grow, but it's not so overwhelming in the beginning that you can afford being...
Yeah.
And I wish you guys luck if this all happens.
Yes.
Mr. Cox, if we'd had this building available when you first came in, would you be in operation now?
Uh, yeah. Part, I mean, there's been some other roadblocks all the way that we had to work through, and you have to wait for equipment to get in, but, I mean, really, we have a building in Dardanelle that was way too small, and we were trying to make work, and it just wasn't something that was going to work out very well for us. And we reached out to all around the area, all the way over to Osara, and everywhere else, just looking for a place that we needed. And we got the pressure from Mayor Ward, and we got to talking against Paul, and we looked at some buildings that were here, and kind of where the discussion came from, started.
I don't know if we touched on jobs, these are machinist jobs?
Yes, we run CNC machinery, and then, uh, so, bringing machinery as well. We plan to use, we all three of us, there's three partners, one of them didn't hear tonight, we're all three graduate candidates. So, we all have a tie here at Russellville. So, that was something that we wanted to kind of do, and use the university, and that helps it work so worse, and that kind of thing, to help, you know, people behind us, because we realized just how hard one of these projects is to get them, you know, to get off the ground.
You'll pay at least minimum wage to these machinist jobs?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're...
What is your pay?
Around fifty to sixty thousand dollar a year job.
Good deal.
That's what we want.
Like the sound of that.
Any other discussion? I believe we've got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That will bring up Alliance request number two, and I think some of you, we've been on discussions on this. I'm sure by now, most of you know the Dalton King Packaging Company closed about a year ago. Their building is vacant, other than some of their old manufacturing equipment that's still in there, and a little bit of old stock. It's in the hands of foreclosure right now, a bank, I believe, in Minnesota, Mr. Harville?
Yes, it is in Minnesota.
The idea was presented today, and I think was, well, covered very favorably, because they voted unanimously. The Alliance is asking the council to consider buying that building, and make it a spec building. Our field rep from Arkansas Economic Development Commission confirmed that in Little Rock, they think this could very well be one of the best available buildings in Arkansas. Our interest in it is creating jobs. What we don't want to see happen is what happened to the Goody's Distribution Center when it closed for years. It was sold to real estate investors, whose only interest was flipping the real estate, make a few dollars, and flip it again, and make a few dollars. Our interest is in creating payroll. We'd like your permission to negotiate with the bank on that building, bring it back for council's final approval. We're thinking somewhere in the one to two million dollar range, probably is what we're looking at. But Paul, uh, Paul from Ben Horn was at the meeting, he estimated the value of that building somewhere around ninety to ninety-five dollars a square foot, and it's fifty-five thousand square feet. It's got an extremely heavy-duty concrete slab under it, it's got a railroad spur, it's got fifty-foot ceilings or thirty-foot ceilings, the ceiling height at Dalton King. Is it thirty or fifty? Well, in that one room, it's fifty.
Yeah, the, the total including the offices out front, I think, is fifty-five thousand, almost sixty thousand square feet. Can you hear this? Okay.
Yeah.
We have shown the building, although we, we've shown the building, we have someone we're working with on that, and showing it. There's a lot to go through and get in your hands on it, a whole lot to go through to get in your hands on it. And there'll be a lot of attorneys that will be helping do that. But the way it works now, the bank in Minnesota has the loan, it's guaranteed by the Small Business Administration. It's the same type of guarantee that they are getting for this building, except USDA is doing that. But they've guaranteed it. Now, Small Business Administration is not really eager to turn loose of that loan, or pay that, part of that debt off, until they see how much they can get for the equipment on the inside, and how much they can get for the building. I do not believe that, in fact, I'd rather, rather say this, it's not going, we're, we'll come back with lots of details for you before you have to approve an amount, or anything else on it. I think really what we're asking for tonight, or trying to tell you, we need to go down with maybe an intent. If all the numbers come in, it all works, then we get our hands on it. It is a good building. And it's one of the best buildings in the state of Arkansas, AEDC loves it. The thickness of the floor is very thick, and that's important in a spec building, just like the one, uh, these guys right here are going to build. We're going to really truly have to make sure that when they build it, you have a very thick concrete floor. Most spec builders are built without the floor, until you find out what's going to be sitting on it. You can set anything you want to, I think included a locomotive inside this, the Dalton King building. But the spur behind it, very few buildings have a spur behind them now. So, that's an asset, in my opinion, I believe that that's a building you could move, I believe that's a building you could put jobs in. And another thing, when someone comes to look at a building, that I've seen happen, it's happened to me in my career, they've come to look at a building, and said, "You know, I don't really think I want that building, but I like this town," and they ended up building their own. So, it helps bring people to look at your, look at your town, too. And mayor, questions over? I've been, I've been fiddling around with this for about five or six months.
Mayor, do we have a special fund that this money comes out of?
Trey's still looking into it, but we think we can do this one out of that Economic Development one also, because it's in an industrial area. The purpose of it would be to, to create jobs.
Okay, motion.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Harville, we'll get with you very quick on that. The one last thing I'd like to mention, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony scheduled in dedication for O Street. Cleveland or not, that's a very popular project.
Yep.
So, nine o'clock, if you're down by Water Burger on O Street, if you're not doing anything, we'd love to see you there. So, that will end the mayor's report. I'll bring up Ms. Tinesse Vaughn, I believe you have our department report this month.
Council members, department heads, and citizens, thank you for allowing me to provide you with the human resources report this month. We have an exceptional staff, and they are the heart of what we do here at the city. The city has two hundred and thirty-three full-time employees and part-time. Forty-one employees have been hired year-to-date, and that includes twenty-eight new hires for the Aquatic Center. The city has four employees who have contributed over thirty years of dedicated service to the city. And also, we have twenty, thirty employees who have dedicated over twenty years to the city. Our turnover rate is low, at five percent. Three employees were able to attend ATU this summer with the city scholarship program. Currently, we're taking applications for one job, it's an operations worker at the street department. Various professional development workshops and training programs have been attended to increase the effectiveness of our employees. Justin Drittlor from the Office of Emergency Management presented a training that was recommended by Pam Faulkner, entitled Staying Safe Outdoors. Our next training is going to be provided by the Department of Labor, and the topic is heat stress. In the spring, Health and Wellness Initiative Program attracted over twenty-eight participants here at the city. Walk Across Arkansas was a competitive eight-week program. Three city teams logged over seventeen hundred miles. When that program ended, employees here at City Hall continued to power walk each Monday. I'm willing to provide the council with any additional information. If you have any questions, I would be happy to address them at this time. If not, thank you again for the opportunity to speak to me.
I have one question. Since training has changed so much to computers versus out-of-town trips, do we do any, do we do the, the commuter, the computer, uh, online seminars and stuff like that, or do all of our employees go out of town?
No. Brady, the training that we provided, we provided downstairs.
Downstairs, good, okay.
Yes, and the employee that came and helped us with that was actually with the Pope County Emergency Services.
Good.
And it was all free.
Good.
And then the one that we'll do next week is also free by the Department of Labor.
Great, thank you. How many employees did you say the Aquatic Center had required?
Twenty-eight. They had three full-time, and the rest of those are part-time.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. That'll bring us to our committee reports. Chairwoman Harris, does the Finance Committee have any business tonight?
A lot of it. But I'm not sure I have it all, I have it in two segments. Okay, so I guess we met on June thirteenth. And on the Finance Committee, my first remembrance of that was the discussion concerning the reallocation of the one-cent sales tax. Mr. Mayor.
Is that, was that a motion?
That was just a discussion to bring it to you, to...
Before we do anything any more drastic, what we're proposing is a series of public input meetings. Apparently, it's not very popular to talk about taking money from a dedicated fund that, that is sufficiently funded, and put it towards a, or operations and maintenance, which has got some challenges coming up. And so, we'd like to hear from the people, what they would like us to do going forward. I propose that we have at least one, and maybe an ongoing series of public meetings, and get the public's input on how they want us to run the city. If the council wants to do it that way, or we can drop the whole thing, or whatever you want to do.
Mayor, I think you need to go ahead with this, because if this, if this happens, it would free up some money so that we could give the employees of the city of Russellville a raise that they haven't had for the last three years. Most people wouldn't stay on the same job for three years without a raise. And I think if we, if we can accomplish this, I think we can accomplish the raises.
I think it would be good to let people ask the questions that they seem to have so much concern about, and, you know, we're as transparent as anybody, regardless of what you see on the internet. We'll have Jerry bring his computer downstairs, we'll do the meetings in the conference room, and whatever people want to know about, we'll be happy to provide the information.
I got up last week at that meeting. Discussed the Aquatic Center, and we needed money to open it. Since then, I have gone back and taken my last year's budget. I've become a moderate to aggressive instead of conservative on the money. I took what I know is going to increase, which is lot fee, APRS, workers' comp. I took absolutely no increases for any raises, no increases on any line item budget. I stuck the Aquatic Center in. And I gave the chairman, the Finance Chairman today a report that it's temporary, but it is, with the Aquatic Center open, we are a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in the red, which, that does not include any revenue from the Aquatic Center, because I have no idea what it's going to produce. But I believe that it will do probably one fifty to two hundred thousand, which would make us a flat budget, just like we were last year. But again, like Robert Wiley said, you've got three years of no raises for a lot of people. We have some salary plans in place that we do do automatically, because that's something we voted on, we've got an ordinance for. But I just wanted to know, I wanted to get your attention, and I got it, when I said we could not open the Aquatic Center. We can't open it, but it's going to be, again, we're going to have to freeze where we're at today. be, again, we're gonna have to freeze where we're at today, or do something to get the revenues up. With, with my moderate to aggressive revenues, that's where I'm at. I just wanted to put that out there. We, we're not gonna close the Aquatic Center.
So we have Madam Chair.
Mayor, can I comment on that?
I, I wanna make a comment or two on that. I, I've given a lot of thought to this, and I've talked to Jerry about this. And right now, since the Aquatic Center opened, uh, revenues right now are forty thousand dollars. Of course, some of those are one-year contracts and all this kind of stuff, but it's still impressive to know that in the first month, it's not, it hasn't even been a month yet, has it, uh, that we've hit forty thousand dollars. I'm not going to hit the panic button, and I hope you guys don't either, on the Aquatic Center. Just like I say, I will never vote against cutting raises, and I will continue to look at raises. I will also, I promise y'all, I will work the next six months, looking at where foolish spending, what, what the council can decide. I don't make decisions for myself, only get one vote. But we need to look at how our spending is, and I think somewhere, right now, there's still enough money to fund that Aquatic Center and give the employees raises. The employees need the raises. There's some wages that, uh, need to come up, and there's some that are okay. If it's not across-the-board raises, I'm fine with that. But I am for protecting the people of Russerville with the employees that we have, and we have some good employees.
Mr. Tripp?
Madam Chair and Mayor, uh, there's been a little bit of discussion about some type of budget review meeting or a series of them.
I'd like for us to start having a series of them.
To see that put in place now, instead of October or November?
I think we, council need to work on this. This is our responsibility to make sure our money is spent wisely.
And when we do this, we need to either, uh, record them and put them, uh, on our website?
Whatever. I don't do websites a lot. I don't like it.
There's other technology ways of doing it, Facebook Live, other, you know, other cities do things like that. And that, that shows, uh, if somebody's not able to come, but it, it shows a, a, a effort of transparency also by doing that. And the second thing, um, not here to argue about it, but I wanna make sure there's no misconception about this. Uh, I understand, we do have some people that need raises, very much so. But we have a great streets and drainage program that's been in place for about ten, fifteen years. And it's one of the few competitive advantages that our, our community has going for us. And the last thing we need to do is get behind the curve on that. Taking money from the streets and drainage, in my opinion, is not a bad idea. It's a horrible idea.
So, I, is this in the form of, I got so carried away with my own mouth here. Um, uh...
It's not really in the form of a motion. It's just discussion?
Yeah, discussion. I think they just need to work on it.
Any other discussion on this before we move on?
No.
Uh, item number two, discussion of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk. Mr. Hunt's here tonight. Mr. Hunt, podium's all yours, probably, uh, to discuss where we are with you, when you wanna start, and when you gonna finish.
First, first of all, the finish date has not changed. We still hope to be finished by next September, October. I forgot what the contract reads, and thank you. And let me just add-
Contract is December.
It's December, okay.
Contract is December twenty-eighth.
But go ahead and stick with September.
Yeah, I would love to get finished in September. Uh, I have, as I was telling the mayor today, I have the biggest project in my career starting in 2019. And so, I definitely want to have this project done long before that project starts. But I wanna add something else about the spec building that you mentioned, that you talked about earlier. About a year and a half ago, eighteen months ago, I called at the time, Mr. Pipkin, uh, Pipkin, who was the, uh, O-We Can Up Development here, and I was getting ready to start a plant called Nova's Advanced Manufacturing. That's where, inside my plant, I build the entire hotel. Uh, we build our own studs, do cold form steel, then we turn around and take it, and we form each building, each room, and we ship it to the job site and put it up. That's how we can go so fast building hotels, once we got all this done. And I desperately wanted to build that, that building, but I needed it really quick, because I had a hotel opportunity to build this for. And I needed a building really, really quickly. And so, I called here, and the reason Russville was so, such a good opportunity for us, we have so many hotels, be Hilton and Mariah, who I developed for, being built in Texas, New Mexico, Florida, Louisiana, and also north of us, you know, back to Tennessee and places like that. And Russville was really a central location for me to be able to ship those hotels to those locations, and it cut my costs down quite a bit. And so, when I spoke to him, he said he did not have a spec building, he had no buildings available. I needed about twenty thousand square feet. And when I spoke to him, we had nothing available. So, we had to go ahead and build south of Nashville. The plant has been operating now. We got about twenty-five employees. They all make about fifty to sixty thousand a year. The management makes about a hundred thousand a year. We have three hotels we're building now. We have a contract with six more hotels. So, I just wanted to say to you, that opportunity, and what you all said earlier, is extremely truthful. That opportunity was missed, and I would love to have that plant here, but that opportunity was missed because there was no building available for me to move into. So, I just wanted to chime in with what the gentleman said earlier, and, and what I've seen as well. And Lawrenceburg had a building already, had utilities in it, had it ready to go. We signed the lease, was up, up working in sixty days. So, that's, that's the kind of thing that a spec building gives you. I just wanna add that to what I need to say. But as far as, uh, my last visit here, uh, we have been working diligently to move this project forward as fast as humanly possible. Uh, tonight, I brought in this, this tree. Uh, my back is still hurting from carrying that tree in tonight, where we finally have got a hundred percent approved drawings by Hilton. Now, we've already submitted and paid for our permits and pulled all our permits for the ninety percent drawing. The appraisal from the bank has already been based on ninety percent of the drawings. But the bank, before we go through finalizing the lending process and going through the process, they wanted obviously a hundred percent drawings. So, tonight, I brought in, we got this done Friday, got the word from Hilton that it was a hundred percent approved. And I, like I said, I would love to have had that done faster, but I have no control over that. And, uh, with all the projects in the, that's being built nationwide with Hilton and Mariah, it is hard, hard, hard to get them to move any faster. Uh, we did get that done, and we got the hundred percent drawing tonight that I'm gonna leave for, uh, for your building department. And, uh, we'll be submitting a copy tomorrow electronically to the bank, to their, to their, uh, contract management people, for them to start going through it. And they will also be sending a copy up to the appraisal system that confirms that what we're borrowing money for and what we're building matches. And that's just, that's just preliminary paperwork that the bank has to do internally, and that takes anywhere from six weeks to a month, uh, for them to get that done, I've been told. I don't imagine it would take any longer, because they've had the ninety percent drawings for quite a while. And this is really just, frankly, it's just, what color the drapes gonna be in the room, what colors the this and that. So, it's really about FFA needed, last ten percent is. So, most of it has no structural value at all, so I'm hoping it would go a lot faster than that. But, uh, but that's kinda what we are with this part of it.
So you don't know what the start date could be?
Well, like I said, sir, I would love to, and let me just back up just a little bit also. I would love to have already started my utilities in underground, which I talked to you about last time, and you asked me that question. We had signed the contract back September fifth to start doing our underground, and, um, and we had another contract gonna start July first to start digging our footings and be pad-ready.
Yeah.
Um, when I submitted this information over to the bank, Todd Manisoff, he told me he need, he need to send that up to their corporate office. And like I said, I don't know the laws in Arkansas, as well as maybe I should, being a developer. I don't know. That's why I have lawyers that work for me. Uh, what we found out was, even though we're only developing on nine acres of this twenty-two acre tract, if I do anything inside the underground, the way the laws are written in Arkansas, if I do any kind of utility work, or dig any footers, or do anything over there, even though it's not on the pad that we're building on, I'm in violation of rules, and we can't put a lien down on the, the bank cannot put a lien down on the property. And so, the lawyers basically stopped me in mid, first part of Sep, first part of June, said, no, you can't do that. Uh, Todd Bank said, if you do it, we're not gonna be the loan you money on, which, which is Centennial Bank, who we have the loan approved by. And then, my lawyer did his research, 'cause I just didn't think that made sense. And he talked to some lawyers here in, in Little Rock, and they also concurred that we cannot do any kind of work on the site as far as digging. And so, because of that, we were not able to do all our underground that I thought I would already be able to do. I can't start that in your state until we actually close the loan at the bank. And the bank can't start that process until I give them a hundred percent drawing, which is what I brought up here today.
So you're looking probably sometime in August?
I don't think it'll go that fast. I, I really think, I wish, I wish things moved that fast. If I had the control of it, sir, I would make it move that fast. But, uh, I would say sixty days is the best I could tell you, is what I was told by the bank, how fast they could think they could get it all done, because they have a third-party management company that, that reviews all of this, and they're really busy now. And so, the bank was saying sixty days to get the loan closed, and let me commence. And so, that's what they told me today. And, and I will add this, sir, because we have a hundred percent drawings today, inside my plant there in Loretta, Tennessee, sometime in the middle of August, we will start building our whole hotel. So, in other words, you'll start seeing eighteen wheelers come in here sometime when I get my pads done, delivering a whole section of the hotel in the convention center one time. So, all of it is built, so you'll see it go up really fast. So, once my pad is poured, once, once, uh, Brian goes out there and expects everything and confirms everything, it's the way it should be, and once all our underground plumbing and all is done, all our underground utilities are done, once that's done, we will start bringing in red iron, it'll be the steel that'll hold the building up. And then, once that is done, we'll start bringing in room at a time to the hotel, I mean, to the hotel in the convention center to build it. So, it'll really, really go up really fast. That's why I'm not, I'm very comfortable saying by next year, we'll have the building built. This, this small window is not gonna affect our opening date at all.
So you're here tonight looking for a sixty-day extension on...
Start.
Amendment to an agreement. Is that, Mr. Trey, we can keep the same agreement that we have with him, with just changing sixty days?
Right. I, I was guesstimating October first, but if it needs to be something else, we can amend it.
But that's all it takes from our, on our behalf?
Right.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Anybody else, any other questions for anybody?
Yeah, yeah. Madam Chair, I do. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Last meeting, I, I tried to go through the Ts and Is with you.
Yes, sir.
Crossing the dotted line. Um, so, what's left, you mentioned some financing issues or financing hurdles, or, you know, crossing Ts, dotted Is with the bank. So, without going in great detail, how much time, or what else, have you provided the bank with everything you need?
Yes, sir.
Everything they've requested has been provided?
Yes, sir.
To this date?
Yes, sir. Last time I, one of the times I came, I brought you a commitment letter from the bank, and that commitment letter, everything the bank needed to approve the loans was, was inside that commitment letter. And we've already fulfilled all of that before they sent me the approval letter. So, funding is not an issue, because quite frankly, if need be, I could self-fund the project if I had to. So, that's not an issue. My issue is all the red tape that frankly, I wish I controlled.
Sure.
But I just don't. And, uh, when you're dealing with major corporations, you just, you just kind of at their jeopardy about when they let you do what you wanna do.
Just to help you out a little bit in your sales pitch, I heard this through the grapevine, but I heard that at one time, there was some of the land, uh, that was under the flood zone or in a flood zone. My understanding is you have that out of the flood zone now?
Yes, ma'am. That's, like I said, we've already invested roughly two-point-two-five million dollars on architectural, on civil, and work like you're speaking of there, to get all the land out of floodplain, been working very diligently with the Corps of Engineers. And I just wanna say this too, madam, you all have one of the most outstanding building departments and city corp, for us working with us, giving us feedback, that's gonna save us money in the long run. And they've just been so helpful, so pleasant to work with, because Lord knows, we don't know everything. We do projects in a lot of different places. And I just can't begin to tell you how helpful they've been to us, to, to help us see things like a retaining wall, that you may not think is much. But if I don't bid it out on the front end, have to come back later and do it, it may cost me four or five times more money. And they pointed those things out to us in our planning review, that's been so wonderful and so helpful, and I just wanna make sure you all know that.
Okay.
Mr. Hunt, would it be, how comfortable do you feel with the October first start date?
Very comfortable.
December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen finish date, with a penalty in there if it's not finished?
Well, I have no, if not finished, well, please understand, I heard y'all talking about all the revenue that you need to generate and how your funds are a little short. You got a private individual here who's investing his own family money into your community and trying to bring in revenue and stop some of that, all that traffic leaving our forty. And so, I'm all for holding, holding my foot to the fire. And I understand the city has tremendous skin in the game, and the citizens have tremendous skin and vested interest in this project. But please note, Mr. Tripp, I'm doing all I humanly can do to get this project built, funded, and open as soon as I possibly can. And if something comes up with weather, you know, like this, like, I give an example, we're building a hotel over in Jonesboro. We had in the last four months, we had thirty, I'm sorry, we had forty-eight rain days. We couldn't work because it was raining every day. Those things, sir, I, I just can't control. Only the good Lord can dictate that to-
But even if it was construction days built into, to that penalty clause?
Yes, sir. If you, if you put, uh, if you put, if you put, well, first of all-
Like a normal construction contract, you put that clause, Mr. Smith adds that clause into this, where, you know, if it's X number degrees, cold or hot, rain, whatever else, you have that much grace period to be put into it. I'm just looking for it to be able to give people an answer.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate you. If you succeed, we succeed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I would, I would agree that, uh, we need to get done by December thirty-first. I don't see why the council and our citizens here will wanna be punitive towards somebody when you work toward your goal. If I am not moving toward a goal, in other words, since I came here last to where I am here now, if I had shown significant progress, and sometimes you don't see the progress as a developer. Sometimes you don't see the money we spend in things we do to get things done. But you can talk to, you can talk to guys in the building department and city corp. We've been working, my team have been working diligently the last three or four months, getting all this stuff done, making all the changes they want. For instance, for me to print that off today, cost me five-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars to bring that in today.
Sure, sure.
I probably sent about thirty of those in here, in the last year. So, we spend money, thousands of dollars, tenths of dollars, every month trying to move this project forward. So, in my mind, if I'm continuing to do those things, I would not think it would be in your best interest or my best interest to have any kind of punitive over my head when I'm continuing to do what's right. Now, if I'm not doing what's right, sir, and I wonder something, by all means, I have no problem paying, paying a penalty for that. But when I'm trying my best to get things done as quickly as I can, as fast as I can, and it's, and it can be easily confirmed, because believe me, Brian Hosen and those guys, no construction, like you won't believe. And if we're not doing something, he'll, he'll be to tell you first and foremost. And I'm also very much in favor of doing monthly meetings, once my, once my superintendent on site, to let you all see each month what we doing, where we are, so you all can monitor where we are.
Okay, one, I think one last question on this.
Yes, sir.
And I just, I just lost it, to be honest with you.
That's okay. I have that problem too, buddy, getting old.
Mm, I know, yeah. Yeah, tell me about it. My wife tells me that all the time.
Yeah, so do mine. That's who tells me that most of the time, actually.
So, you, you, at one, this is what it was, at one time, you told the council-
Mm-hmm.
-that the bank would release funds once another project was X number percent done.
Yes, sir.
In the bank's terms, how, what percentage is that project at?
They want the project to be seventy-five percent done, and that's basically putting the roof and the windows in the building in Jonesboro, Arkansas. On the twenty-fourth, next week, we deliver all the windows, install the windows. And on Octo, right now, on August seventh, we put the roof on the building. So, and that never has been an issue for me, because I was gonna self-fund up to, I bit my pad anyway.
But, but you still have, the bank is still a component?
Yes, sir. They're still a component.
It's still part of the business?
Yes, sir. So, what I'm saying is, by the time I start this project, there won't be no restrictions on me accessing their money just as fast as I need to.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to give him an October first start date.
I got, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Hunt?
Hey, Mr. Brown, how you doing, my friend?
Fine.
Hope you're family-
I had a talk with the mayor and stuff, and, uh, the thing you talked about having the monthly meeting and stuff.
Yes, sir.
I think if you did that with us, sir, that would keep you out of trouble.
Yes, sir.
And, and would help us and help you too.
Yes, sir.
So, we can understand where you're at and what's going on.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just look forward to starting that real soon.
Well, I, I tell you what, we have the bank, as well as, um, my architect, as well as my superintendent, they, on the fifth of each month, they'll do a walkthrough on the project and kinda show everything. I would love to have the city council, or someone, or representative of the city council, to be a part of those walkthroughs, so you can physically hear all different sides, not just my side, which is gonna be rosy, obviously. But, you're supposed to laugh at that, Mr. Brown. But, uh, but, but also to hear the progress that the bank sees, that their, that their inspector sees. So, you all also filtered on the whole project, because as I said, the city has a lot of skin in this game. You have a vested interest in this thing being very successful and being done right, and I wanna make sure it's done that way.
It's just, we, to me, I want some more eyes out there, so we know what's going on.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No problem, no problem at all. Now, is this only regarding the convention center, or whatever else we build out there?
Well, right now, you've got a convention center and a hotel out there.
Okay, so just those two items. Well, we hope to be bringing a bunch of other things out there.
Well, that's fine.
Yes, sir.
I hope you do that.
And I'd like to be one of the guys to walk, get, walk through it, too.
Yes, sir. Love for you two. Yes, sir. Love it. Please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to give him till October first as a start date.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
No, I'm not done with my motion, though. October first start date. And, Mr. Hunt, you're completely sure that outside of construction, normal construction delays, December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen is sufficient?
Yes, sir. I have to be done by-
Not even coming back and saying, hey, it's not-
No, sir. I have a commitment that I'm making in, in, in Middle Tennessee that I have to be done by starting in, in, in nineteen-
With, with monthly, monthly written, written updates at least provided to us, quarterly in-person updates, in any construction language as the city attorney deems, deems necessary to be added at his discretion. That's my motion.
Everyone hear the motion? Any other discussion?
Clarification.
Do you mind if we make sure we've got this right?
Yes. Yes, please.
Yeah, just for clarification, there's been a lot of information in the media, social media and everything else about this convention center. Uh, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for, for your presentation, I liked the way he referred to the skin in the game. You know, he's got skin in the game, the city's got skin in the game. Mr. Mayor, would you briefly, uh, or maybe I can, you, tell me if I'm, I'm right about this. Last fall, when I was campaigning, I had a lot of people tell me, said, you know what, you need to do away with that convention center. We don't need a convention center, why do we need a convention center? One of the first things I did was check out the convention center, and what our skin is in the game.
Yes, sir.
And that tax that y'all talked about has been collected and been gone away for how long?
Oh, wow.
Ten years?
Ten years. So the skin in the game for the city of Russville is done. We've already put our skin in the game. We've collected the taxes, we bought the land, we have leased that land now to Mr. Hunt, we have set aside two, approximately two and a half million dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, for Mr. Hunt on completion date, and then he pays that back to us over a certain time period and certain, uh, qualificat-, uh, all the different stipulations. Now, that said, he's not going to get that two and a half million until he finishes.
Yes, sir.
That said, that land that we have bought and leased to him is not going anywhere. That said, the city of Russville is not going to be out anything in the way of maintenance or contributing to this convention center on an annual basis, because he owns, he will own and, and lease out that hotel and convention center as a private individual.
Yes, sir.
Just like the other hotels that are located at exits eighty-one and eighty-four here in Russville. We don't, we don't prop any of them up, other than providing police, fire, water, you know, all the things that we do as a city, we're going to do that.
Yes, sir.
We've got a sewer, I, I remember proving the sewer lines that are coming, come out of that, where they're going to connect out here at Parkway. So that's done. And I really hope that we can get this turned around to where this idea that this convention center is Russville's convention center, it is Russville's convention center in that it's being built here, just like Arkansas Tech is a college that exists here, but it's not the city of Russville's, it's the state of Arkansas's. And if you don't believe it, go out there with me on June the thirtieth, when I have to count the cows on the farm, because they belong to the people of Arkansas. They don't belong to the city, they belong to the people of Arkansas. And believe it or not, I actually do that, as an independent person that knows a cow from a goat. But the point is, and I'm rambling now, this convention center, as far as the Russville, our skin has already been laid out there. Have I said anything wasn't true, Jerry, or Mr. Mayor?
Not that I heard.
Thank you.
That was a pretty good summary. Uh, would point out one more thing, if you get open out there and you're losing three hundred thousand dollars a year, what's our share of that?
None, sir.
It's always been the part that we stuck firm on, as far as we can tell, no other city has ever pulled that off.
No, sir.
So thank you for your patience and, and for your persistence and trying to make-
Clarification on what he just said, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
God forbid, but if you foreclose, something forecloses on that convention center, what's the liability, city of Russville?
None.
Chair, can we vote on? We didn't vote it.
All right, I, I'd like to, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, sir.
Let's go over this one more time. October first start date?
October first start date.
Monthly?
Written reports, and that can even be a bank, uh, provided, or, you know, a report he provides to the bank, just, you know, something of, of, of merit?
Well, your superintendent will do a, keep a diary, I guess, and so he can make a decision.
And I don't, I don't care if it's something that the bank does, or something he provides to the bank.
I'm, 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 I'm trying to hear some details.
Quarterly, uh, uh, in-person, that's similar to what we did with the aquatic center during that process, and anything that Mr. Smith deems necessary to add, add construction-related language to, to benefit or to protect the city.
Okay.
You got any specifics on your mind, Mr. S-, Mr. Smith at this point, or you got that?
No, it's, that is stuff that will have to be added in the final resolution.
Okay.
And also, you wanting the, to go back to the December thirty first completion date, right?
That's what Mr. Hunt said, he feels totally comfortable with.
I'll have to go back and change that too, then.
I hope delivered long before December thirty first, to be honest with you, Mr. Tripp.
Okay, we ready to vote on this, make a motion, or?
Say whose meeting are we in?
Yeah, I think we're in Spanish.
Sure is, yeah. You ready?
A motion, second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
This is their, uh-
Aye.
What was the motion?
The motion just to give him sixty more days.
It's October.
So that was the motion.
Well, to go to October one.
October one, October one. Beginning date, October one.
We'll get that worked out, get you, we'll countersign the agreement.
Yes, sir.
In your hands.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
Yes, sir, y'all have a blessed evening.
Mr. Hunt, I understand you're headed back to Nashville tonight.
Have a safe trip.
Be safe.
You should be safe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I address the chair? Number three is, was supposed to be regarding the Phoenix Avenue Trail, but I guess it's moot now since the money wasn't appropriated.
So nothing on number three?
Correct.
Okay, and number four, the discussion to negotiate the sales price of property located on North El Paso Avenue.
There's no update on that, we're still waiting, uh, well, there's a little bit of an update. We expect the results of the Phase Two environmental study that we talked about last week to be done by, they could probably get verbal results before the end of July, probably have it in on paper and in our hands by, uh, say, second week of August. So that's moving along, and that's what the holdup is right now.
So right now, we're still in the, the discussion stages?
Right.
Okay, uh-
They, they don't feel like they can make an offer until that Phase Two environmental study is done, but at that time, they'll have an offer on the table.
Okay, this was passed by the, our meeting to bring forth, forward discussion, and, but I have a question on this now. As we move forward with this project and having driven by these projects, the North El Paso is a very nice facility, and the property that we're looking at is not so nice of a fa-, uh, a facility, are we going to do any, how are we going to resolve that, or that, does that need to discuss later? I'd like to know, since we're short on money, uh, and not knowing where new money's going to come from, that's what I'm being told, um, if we were to sell this North El Paso property for five hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we buy another building for five hundred and seventy-five thousand, but it needs, uh, a lot of repairs to it, is there a way we can get someone in there to give us an estimate what that building's going to cost and put it up to where we can use it before we really just make this final decision? You think that's going to be possible?
I would assume we could get some good estimates, uh, it wouldn't be as easy as, I mean, if you'll let us do it the way we're hoping, we would like to do what we did on Fire Station Three, let our in-house people manage the remodel, and hire out the trades, and hire out the stuff that is more efficient for them to do it that way. Um, you know, talking about how bad we waste money around here, at one time, it was projected to cost us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix the mold issues at Fire Station Three, and I think we totaled that one out at just under two hundred thousand by doing it in-house and shopping and letting our guys do the work, so if the council's okay with it, that's how we'd like to do it. We can get a pretty good estimate. Please keep in mind that while we do have some constraints coming up to deal with our general fund, there are areas where we have some money. Once this purch-, property is purchased, you can't purchase the property with street department funds, but you can improve it with street department funds. And I know Mr. Tripp's concerned about any of, he, uh, other use of street money, uh, like we were talking about earlier, but Kurt has a two-point-five million dollar reserve right now, he's got about eight million in the bank, but we're guarding that jealously because at, uh, probably the start of twenty nineteen, we'll be in construction, hopefully, on the Corps of Engineers project, and we're trying to be responsible about keeping an eye on that. But we think, uh, construction budget of three or four hundred thousand dollars right now would be reasonable, that's just a guess, and that could be, some of it could be paid for out of the building R and M, uh, we can pay for it out of that reserve fund, there's, there's places we can get that.
But we will have other discussions on this, okay? But it was, it was agreed to come here tonight for discussion, so anybody else have anything in motion from the floor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to have a comment on that. Regarding the sale of the property, um, I would love to, to see it at least looked at, there's another piece of property close by the property that we've got a, I think, an offer on, a pending or a contingent offer, that I think would be better suited for us that, uh, that Arkansas Tech already owns, if they could, if they provided that with enough property to suffice for public works, I think that would be a better deal in a trade than a buy and sell.
Which location?
Crosses two.
Well, we could take another run at that.
That's explored thoroughly before we move and have a three or four hundred thousand dollar expense on top of the purchase price.
Well, we could take another look at that, uh, we try to let our departments decide on their own, wherever we can, what works best for them. I know y'all, you guys control the purse strings, but the biggest issue with that was when I inquired about it, Arkansas Tech told me they wanted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it, there was no even trade at that time. It's smaller than this building by, I don't know, Mr. Jones, ten or fifteen thousand square feet less under roof?
More.
I don't know about under roof, but I know the yard area is considered as smaller.
I, I believe that one was eighteen thousand square feet, and the one we have a offer pending on is thirty-five thousand under roof.
Sixteen.
And it's four point acres on the one we're looking at, and, and I think it was two, but there, we, we did inquire about the prop, from the property owners of the property to the north, that would basically connect it over to the next street up, but, uh, one of the partners said he had to talk to the others and get back with us, and he's never, he's never told us they would even consider selling, so we could, we'll take another run if that-
Well, but our bargaining chip on this is that I'm not sure what our need is to sell public works right now, so.
Well, we don't have to, I mean, we can leave it like it is and, and, uh, you know, no disrespect to the department, I know I hurt their feelings, but there is a, there's an effort underway by other groups to improve El Paso, I think y'all are familiar with the Salter deal, uh, there's a master plan being developed, it's, it's a long-range plan, but, um, you know, when we got into this, the idea was that it would be, uh, basically an economic development mech- mechanism, uh, to try to develop that into higher, better use, I guess would be it.
I'm not against, I'm not against something happening, but I'm against the city doing something for somebody else's benefit and us having a three or four hundred thousand dollar additional expense.
Well, I mean, I guess, it's a difference of our opinions, I think that we benefit out of anything that, that could add potential economic development, especially at the level that they're projecting. We, we've done it before.
I believe we did-
That's what our economic development funds are for, that's what we were just talking about with Mr. Harville. Sometimes we have to make something happen instead of sitting here waiting on it to happen, but I'll do whatever the council wants to do. I know right now, the idea of us doing anything different than what we've always done has been under fire, and so I understand your reluctance, reluctance to be bowled about something. Madam Chair, are we through?
No.
No, we, we got a lot.
But I'm going to speed it up, okay. Appropriation for the sales tax for seven thousand dollars real estate survey and for environmental testing on El Paso, which is what you just said we had done, right, or working on?
We need to appropriate this there.
We need to appropriate seven thousand dollars for, to do the survey for the environmental testing on, on the, uh, Public Works building on North El Paso.
Are they for splitting that with? That's correct, okay.
That's in a form of a motion?
In form of a motion? Did I get a motion?
That was-
Oh, it is.
It is in a form of a motion.
You don't have to go on that, okay. Consideration of resolution on the city of Russville.
We need to vote on that, don't we, Mayor?
You gotta vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Vote on what?
Okay, sorry.
All right, you heard the motion. Another discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Madam Chair.
Okay, consideration of resolution for the city to accept a bid for removal of two dilapidated structures.
Motion.
Any seconds on that?
Seconds.
Second, any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah. Right, oh, yeah, y'all, y'all recommended that in the form, form of a motion. We have Jeff McCarty here who would like to speak to that. Mr. McCarty, are you ready? This is, yeah, step to the microphone, give us your name, please, and then, uh, you're free to address your thoughts on it.
My name's Jeff McCarty, and, uh, I've been in conversation with the city about the purchase of one of the structures that's up for demolition, and, uh, I understand you're looking tonight whether to accept the bids that were submitted for the demolition on both structures, and I was wondering if you possibly could, I believe they were done by two line items each structure, and if you could postpone or delay one or both for, uh, one to two weeks, uh, so that I can make the purchase, I've had agreement with the owner to purchase, and then I would do the rehab on the structure.
So you, you'll know next, by next month?
Yes, oh, yes, I, they said they hoped it could close within, uh, one week, but they wanted me to ask for two.
Uh, Mr. Smith, can we do this? Had, this was your bid, uh, you handled these bids.
Right.
Was it one or two, or?
They, they bid it as one, although they are stipulated to break it down per address for purposes of filing a lien for each individual structure, so, uh, I don't have that breakdown at that time, so it would probably, it would stop both of them.
Mr. Hostin, you got an opinion on this?
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. When he takes the sale of his property, does, is it irritated that he's got to do the same thing, Trey, or?
Yes, he's walking into the same problem that, uh, the owners have now, which is to either rehab it, or it's going to get removed either at their expense or, uh, at the city's expense.
I'm okay with it.
Mr. McCarty, you're aware of the rehab agreement, you have to put up a cash bond, right?
Yes, based on.
And you've got a hundred and eighty days to get it into compliance?
Yes, yes. Uh, so if, uh, once my offer, I mean, once it's, it's been accepted, but once the closing's completed, then I would enter the rehab agreement with a deposit? Is that correct? Is that correct? Okay.
Mayor, I'm making a motion. We table this till next month?
Second.
No, can't, can't do the one and?
I don't have the breakdown. They're gonna, I could get it from them.
Okay.
Cause they, they knew they had to break it down, but for the ease of the bid, they put it together.
Cause we don't have addresses on it to bill on either one of them.
Okay, so we got a motion. Did I hear a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Tripp?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right. We wrote it on a motion to table till next month. Give Mr. McCarty a chance to get this, uh, closed on. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. McCarty. Uh, get back with us as soon as you close on that.
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Um, a resolution, uh, authorizing the mayor and clerk to, uh, enter to an agreement with, um, the debit card for the city's employees who do not have bank accounts. And I present that in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the committee's motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Madam Chair.
Uh, consideration of the resolution, authorizing the mayor and, no, uh, personnel, to sell personnel property, personal property through the government deals, uh, auction service, and I present that in the form of a motion.
This was the road grader, motor grader from, uh, Public Works. Counsel, you heard the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, resolution, uh, I'm sorry, a resolution of a, a consideration of the resolution, uh, forming a city council committee, another one, to gather information and review the sale of alcohol within the city and to make a recommendation to the city council. And I present that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Counsel, you heard the motion. Is there discussion?
I'd like to bring up this to.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'd like to. I've been doing a lot of research on this thing. And like, if you've been in the community, I can tell you that, uh, I've had very little negative input from people, but I've had, uh, a lot of positive input. And I don't, as it is right now, in my right trade, it's going to be a county thing.
Yes, it would be a county one.
Uh, so we need to develop a committee here to talk with the county and reference to. We're going to go, I don't know what the vote was, but it was close here in the county one way or the other. But, uh, within, I don't remember. Penny, do you remember what it was?
I do not.
The, the vote?
No, I don't.
In the county. Anyway, there's, uh, I'll just say this. If you go out there and look, it's here already, people. You know, it's here. Uh, we have the hotel permit, we have the, the restaurant permit, we have the private club permit, we have the, uh, restaurant permit where they allow you to bring wine in and drink it in, in with your meal, as long as you're meeting an appointment. The things we don't have is I can't go and buy beers at Kroger's or, uh, at the store or Walgreens or whatever. Or we don't have tag and flicks in it. And those are things I want to develop. We got a year to do this. There's no way we could get anything done before November to this year. It gives us plenty of time to look at it and what, what we can do and what we can't do. And I just want to proceed on it at the slow pace.
And as far as I understand, this is the first time that the city has taken the lead on this. I was, usually it's a private citizen or a group.
Yeah.
That sets up the wet, dry issue in the county and get the petition. So this would be our, kind of the city's first time leading this discussion. I think it's pretty cool.
Okay. Counsel, I think you need to hear from our city attorney on this. It, it's something we can do, but we need to be careful about it.
I agree.
Mr. Smith, explain the, the two different versions you've got here and the part about advocating.
Well, there's your traditional committee of usually, uh, four council members, or I know that there was another committee approach advocated last week about everybody picking a community member, uh, and form a committee that way. However, the state law prohibits the cities from, from cities from advocating anything on the ballot. Uh, the Pacific Law seven one, seven dash one dash one eleven, which, uh, makes, which limits the city's act to only maybe doing more than ju- just basically doing a resolution showing a willingness or support or anything like that. Uh, I mean, it can, you can discuss it, but that's about the limit of official action the city can do.
So you're saying the city council can't do, take, uh, active role in something like this?
Not as an official act of the city, what you do on your own time.
I agree with you.
As a private citizen, this, the whole wet, dry issue is a referendum petition driven, uh, system that the citizens on their own have to make that orgas- organize and present a petition if it meets the threshold requirement under the law of 38% of the registered voters in the county.
So you could, you could form an official council committee for what this is, gather information and review it. But, but then at that point, we handed off to a private committee. They have to take it up and do it.
They have to, at the end of the day, the citizens of this county have to do a canvas to collect the signatures if that's, if they want to provide an election.
Well, personally, I don't think the city council should be involved in this. Personally, that's my opinion. I think we ought to leave it to the individuals. We represent all the people, not just one group.
Would agree with that.
So I'm, personally, I'm against something like this. I think the individuals need to do something like this if they want to do it. And then we have the right to go vote the way we want to vote.
That's exactly right. You got the right to go vote.
But I don't think we've got the right to bring a, a petition of this sort to the community. I think that, that's up to the individuals.
According to Mr. Smith, that we're prohibited from it.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to go on record.
We've been prohibited from advi- from advocating or promoting the petition. We can get the information, but it's really pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
State law is what it's been for years. You got to get 38% of the registered voters on a ballot for an alcohol initiative.
Yeah.
I just want to say one more thing about this. Uh, first of all, I just, I think it's time to, well, either the city council can do it, but the city steps up, we, private citizens or what, step up and, uh, we get on the same playing field that everybody else is. And that we also look at, uh, all the things that, the benefits that we could reap from that and, um, what we're already losing out on. I, I, real quick here, I, I got this off the computer today. Uh, this last 2014 election, everybody know where you had the wet and dry issue. Uh, there was a, the organization that was, uh, in front of, the guy's name was Couch. Anyway, he's, he's, he raised $200,000 to support the wet and dry issue in favor of in the state of Arkansas. There was 1.8 million raised just by the people from special concessions and liquor stores and those kind of things. So just, I'm bringing that out. So, thank you.
All right. I believe this was presented in the form of a motion.
Correct. Consideration of a resolution.
Yeah. Okay. So counsel, is there other discussion? The motion then would be about forming a city council committee to gather information.
Correct.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
No.
And cleans that up. That motion fails, Madam Chair.
Okay. The next items down through, from 10, 11, 12, and 13, and 14, uh, might, 14 might not be. Um, yeah, 14 probably isn't. The rest of them are, those are just appropriations for line items and for expenses that need to be passed through, moved over. And I, we, I rec- take those as a motion to adopt.
Okay, counsel, the committee's motion then is items 10 through 14.
14, mhm.
Uh, recommended. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items are approved, Madam Chair.
Okay, 15 and 16 are the same, um, agreements that we have with the Boys and Girls Club and the Alliance. And I recommend both of those in the form of a motion. These are their monthly payments or annual, whatever.
Counsel's motion is for 15 and 16.
Correct.
Recommend in favor of. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those two items are approved, Madam Chair.
Uh, and tonight we met again. And number one is no longer. Number two is the reimbursement for the Main Street project, same as these other two on another day. And that's to fund the Main Street project. And I recommend, uh, that came, comes to, pursuant to the council, form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the motion and the earlier discussion. Is there any other discussion for that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Three through eight still open for discussion. These are all the, um, expenditures from different departments, appropriations for different items. And I'm going to present all of those in the form of a motion.
Madam, Madam Chair, can I inquire, I believe number six, the committee did not recommend.
Right, number six. Scratch six.
So your motion is three, four, five, seven.
Yes.
Motion is for approved, for adoption. So counsel, is there any discussion? Have I heard some?
Number six is completely off the table.
It's dead.
For now.
So that, uh, trail that we were going to get for half price, basically, we will not be doing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all I have.
Those items are approved.
It's all yours. Thank you.
That will bring us to the Personnel Committee report. Mr. Chairman, do you have anything for us?
Uh, not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So now we're down to, I guess, whole business number one. Consideration and ordinance rezone property R1. This is a third reading. Uh, and we're going to need a motion in a second to put that in play. Seriously? This is where we're going to dispose of this?
I'll make a motion.
I move for its adoption.
We got a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
I'll second it.
Second.
So we can vote.
You gotta have a third reading first.
Yeah. Do we want this to be in for the short reading?
Oh, no. Your motion is to read. Yeah, suspend the rules. So we don't have to read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion then is to suspend the rules for the third reading. Correct? Mr. Sims?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion to suspend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Smith introduces to this piece.
In ordinance rezone, sir, realty in the city of Russville, Arkansas, and for other purposes, this ordinance has passed with rezoned property currently R1 to PUD that is located at Jennifer Lane, Russville, Arkansas, as further described in the attachment labeled Exhibit A and commonly known as Hudson Harbor.
I'm, yeah? I make a motion to take this to vote. Motion to adopt.
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion, counsel, if you don't mind, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven members of the public that would like to speak to this. We'll take them in order. Mr. Ron Hughes.
Good evening. Ron Hughes. This has been going on for six months as we all know. I think we're all glad it's going to be over tonight. We've had a lot of misinformation about this particular property. We've heard that a PUD in Long Island had seven square miles. Russville, Arkansas is only 28 square miles, so I really don't see what that has to do with the project in particular. The project has been said that it'll be within 50 foot of somebody's front door. That's not accurate either. It's been said that this code was redone to accommodate this subdivision. I wish I had that kind of clout because if I did, we wouldn't be on a third reading. It's been said that the subdivision will raise the traffic count by 1,000 cars a day. This would require each home to have two cars and every vehicle to come and go 25 times a day. Not likely. And this is the least traveled state road in the city. And if 20 homes are going to cause that much traffic, no one could build a Marina Road. And yet you're, there are approximately 1,000 acres of undeveloped land on Marina roadway. And we're just 4.31 acres of that. Density. We exceed all density requirements. We're less dense than Marina Shores, great looking project, and less dense than Cobblestone, also a great looking project. And most of the, Cobblestone has virtually no green space. I fail to understand why neighbors would oppose such a planned, restricted, heavily regulated community versus the ability to build R1, virtually anything that, that would meet R1 code, which would include starter homes. And these homes could be painted any color, any style, with no regulation other than meeting the code of R1. No fencing, no gated, just whatever. None of this is an option in this particular project. The loudest opponent of this project has a beautiful home and it appraises for $97 a foot, a long way from $150 a foot that this project will appraise for. Because of such restrictions in, in the amenities offered, these homes will sell per square foot higher than 99% of the homes in Pope County, including mine. This community will have an HOA responsible for all of the outside appearance. Not the case in just an R1 project. The city planner has recommended this community project. The planning commission unanimously passed the development. We've met many of the objectives outlined in the 2020 plan. In addition to the stringent requirements already in place, these home will, these homes will offer smart home capability and guaranteed heating and cooling bills. No other project in this county offers this type of construction. We could have asked for 24 lots and still met the densum code. We did not. We asked for 20. You've heard from the real estate community that there's a tremendous need for this type of housing. When you sell four units at $144 a square foot in a week on a project that has virtually no green space, no lake access, no gazebo, and they are all condos, all those projects are still extremely nice and obviously desirable, or they would not have sold as quickly as they did. This tells you that there's a need for this in our community. Currently, the annual taxes for this property is $332.21. With this subdivision completed, the annual taxes will be approximately 40,000, pardon me, $40,000. Obviously, tonight, we've heard there's a need for funds in the city. You've done some great projects. I drove down O Street today for the first time. Amazing. Loved it. So we've not, we've not attracted that much new manufacturing in the last 25 years. Th- those dollars for those kind of projects have to come from something like Hudson Harbor, which is named after my grandson. One of my best friends was in my office last week. He was, he's worked for me for 35 years. He was adamantly against Walmart Market on West May. He lives next to it. I asked him what he thought about the market today. He loves it. Virtually the only place they shop. I thank you for your time. I hope you give it consideration and ask you to pass this. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Next up, Mr. Dave Garza. Dave, I want to point out, Mr. Hughes got his done with 17 seconds left of his five minute time limit. So.
I'll be here. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Uh, the city of Russville recently completed, or will be completing, some very nice and long needed projects, such as the state of the arc, uh, fire station that is right next door to our office, the aquatic center, and East O Street. I've also been up in it, and it's nice. It's sweet. These projects would not be possible without tax money from some source. We're losing police officers faster than we can send them to the academy because of lack of pay, because of the, the low wage. My son was a police officer of Russellville. And I'm acquainted with many other Russellville officers, so I can speak with some authority on this issue. The fire department needs updated equipment. We've all heard that in the recent months. Uh, we need to get the base salaries of our employees up. I used to be an employee, so I understand that. Tuesday, Mayor and I sat in a meeting, Russville City Corporation Board Meeting, and heard a stick, a. That's a half percent growth in a year. We were, I was shocked when I heard it. I was, I was totally amazed. And that's it. And these are factual records. Our inflation is higher than that. We're not growing. Something is happening, and we're feeling that now with the crunch, with the financial crunch that the city's facing and is under. And that, that's given us some light as to what's happening. And when I heard that, I went, wow. So we're not growing fast enough yet, but all of our citizens want better and bigger. They want stuff for our teens to do. They want stuff for our kids to enjoy, bigger parks, better roads. So how are we going to pay for this? The money has to come from somewhere, and it's not coming out of the sky. No one wants to hear those two bad words, "new tax." When you say that, social media lights up. Yeah, I mean, the cable system would probably burn down. You know, I mean, you see it. I mean, it's boom, it'll blow up. It will. It's, it's going to be like a frenzy. We're, we're glad for the, for the tourist dollars that we get. You know, we have that coming in. We haven't had a whole lot of commercial industrial development, but we're having something. It was, it was really good to hear what's going to happen with these two gentlemen. I was excited about that. But we do have some developers that are developing some residential neighborhoods, and we have some small commercial development, and that helps. It helps fill in some of the gaps, but it's not, it's not enough. You know, we need more. We need it to continue, and we need more. If this project will, this project will add to our tax base and provide a lot of local jobs. Many of the products, materials we've purchased here in Russellville, the developer has planned to use many of the local contractors, and so their employees will be paid through that, which will then spend locally here in Russellville. And, you know, that's good news to people, more jobs. We've been busy out there right now, and it's been exciting. But we're asking that you will approve this development. It's small, it's 20 units, but it's still a tax base that will revolve over and over again as contractor buys material, uses contractors, uses employees. They purchase here in town. They buy groceries, they buy gas. So we see that money revolving in Russellville, and hopefully also the tax from that coming into the city to help the city. That's all I have to say.
Got to beat them.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Yeah, you did. The next one, I apologize if I get the last name wrong, I'm having trouble reading it. It's, I believe it's Ronnie Biggs. Is that correct?
No.
Thank you.
It's not correct.
Burge? Burge?
My name is Ron Burge.
There we go.
To me, I've lived out there for 60 years. I have three acres out there, right across from where this gentleman's from. I remember when he bought it, either him or whatever. And the thing of it is, it sounds like, you know, you're going to get all your tax money from us on Marina Road, is what it sounds like to me. But the thing of it is, there's a lot of people here, I know it here in this room here, that lives out there, and it's funny to me that unless somebody owns three and a half acres, I don't know most of that myself, build 20 houses right across the road and instead of building three nice homes over there. I don't understand that, but it sounds like, you know, he's going to make all this money, probably end up being a millionaire out of it. But it's going to be a cost for me and a lot of these other people here. We're paying the price, it's not him or anybody that's building it. And it's up to you, men and women of the council, to not think of building some houses out there is going to bring you in a bunch of tax money because it's not. It won't bring you in that much. I don't think it will. But you need to think about us that's lived out there our whole lives. It's our homes, and suddenly they want to come in and build homes. You know, I'm not against building homes, but not on three and a half acres, I'm not, when it's just going to be one fifth of an acre for each house. I wouldn't want to live there myself. But anyway, that's my feeling on it, and I believe the council ought to not just look at the tax money or whatever this gentleman talked about, but think about us because we've been here a long time, and we've paid a lot of taxes. But now it seems like they're trying to take our privacy away from us, our retirement homes. I mean, what do we got left? You know, if we, if you let them do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harry Simcox.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, men and women, this is about the fifth time I've been here. I know you're just bored with me as I am with being here. But let me tell you first and foremost, I'm a 46-year resident of Pope County. Forty-one of those years I've lived in Russellville. My four daughters graduated Russell High School. I've served faithfully and was sent on your Civil Service Commission and currently serve on your Equalization Board representing the city of Russell. I'm proud of this city. I have never in my life in 41 years been before this council for anything because I'm not an againer. But when I felt that the threat from this neighborhood being proposed down here was such, I had to come forward and give my two cents worth. You know, when we look at this thing, it's a risk on retirement people that live out there where I live. It's a challenge to the whole neighborhood, but I think it's prudent for you council members to understand on two previous councils, in May of 2015 and in October of 2016, this very proposal was turned down. You have now the opportunity to do it and put it to rest, and that is my hope and my prayer for you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Third. Mr. Danny Henderson.
We appreciate your patience and your perseverance over this long haul. Seems like it's taken too long to take care of this. It's been too hard on me, I know. And I'm sure you know by this time that everyone in my neighborhood is in favor of retaining the R1 zoning that we have there, the R1 zoning that we have in all the neighborhoods adjacent to my neighborhood. And it's understandable, these people are just wanting to protect their property values. They want to have similar construction near to them, and they just want to protect their neighborhoods. That's understandable, like you want to protect yours. From Skyline to Marina Road, from Marina Way to Hilltop, and all the adjacent neighborhoods, all of those residents, all those property owners also approach 100% in their support of retaining this as an R1 zone. This needs to remain an R1 zone. It is for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of houses in that neighborhood. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration of this issue tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Tabitha Davis. Can, can we hold the applause to the end, please?
I have a basic and final question. We got, we got motion by the use, and we got no use in the, there is a reason back to the church. Problem, first of all, I don't be glad to answer your questions.
Stand by. Dr. Andrew Monphy. Dr. Monphy, that microphone in the middle works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Dr. Andrew Monphy, and I live at 1111 Marina Way. I've been in Russellville since 1985. The last nine months, I've had the opportunity to be involved with a group of concerned citizens for the city of Russellville, and we've made a lot of contacts during that time, and we have a good feel for the will of the people. And it's not just, you hear it from the immediate neighbors of this, of this development, and then we branch out from there, and we go through R1, and we go through R2, and we go through, excuse me, Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3, and Ward 4. We spent a lot of time with the people. We've had actually over 1,800 individual contacts with voters, with taxpayers, with voters. The people want to retain R1 in this area, and the other people throughout Russellville support their wishes. We elected you, you're our voice, and we ask for a favorable outcome to preserve R1 zoning. Thank you.
Counsel, that's all the speakers that have signed up. It's your turn. Any comments? All right, we have a second. Madam Park, would you call the roll?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Trent?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Your vote. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
No.
Ms. Karid?
No.
Mr. Westcott?
No.
The motion fails five to three. That brings us to new business one, discussion of a whole, the structure on North Commerce. Mr. Holstein, you want to give us an, you'll give us an update on North Commerce?
Mayor, can we take a five-minute, three-minute break?
It'll take Brian about five minutes to get up here. We're going to take a five-minute recess and reconvene in five minutes.
Please, because all of a sudden, I can't hear the background noise. It's obviously a two-way. Anybody can hear this.
Excuse me, can we come to order, please? We need to finish up. Mr. Holstein, are you ready to give us an update on North Commerce?
On North Commerce?
Hit it.
At, at, we didn't make it to the discussion. We discussed this structure, downtown structure. Basically, my first objective was public safety and property safety. So we chose to barricade it. If they didn't, they, they did come in and barricade in front of the buildings, so it was, we were satisfied at that point that we were protecting the public and the buildings around it. Now my objective tonight is to do the same thing we do every time with a dilapidated structure, and that is for you got, for the council tonight to decide whether or not they want to send this thing for dilapidated structure. They would do the same process, they would sign the rehab... They would do the same process, they would sign the rehab agreement if they wanted to rebuild this structure, or if they didn't, it would be tore down. So tonight, I'm just bringing it to you for dilapidated structure.
Well, Brian, do you feel like he wants to redo it, or rebuild it, or?
I really, I really don't know his desires, but I'm just, all I know is, in eleven days, if he doesn't make a decision, the city council will decide what the route to go, and that would be either he tears it down or we do.
Well, I've been told that it would cost more to remodel it than it would be to tear it down and start over.
Well, my position is, I had, I had an engineer that addressed these issues. Actually, Betsy actually sent the, asked the engineer to come in and evaluate the building. And his evaluation was, it could be saved. Now, he had some immediate concerns. We have the front of that building that's still unstable.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to barricade. But with his report, I was inclined to say, okay, you know, then, at this point, if an engineer tells me that it can be rehabbed, I have, I have to feel like, if a person wants to spend the money, have at it.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Holstein, I've received a call from the owner of the structure late this afternoon, actually in the parking lot before coming in. You know, like they said, they're out of state, but they did say that, you know, they're literally still waiting on word from the insurance company. And I think, it was my interpretation that that was going to have a lot of bearing on kind of, you know, how they proceed. I realize that's, it's relative, but not relative at the same time, but I wanted to share that.
Oh, can we ask you to repeat that? We couldn't hear that.
Yeah, get closer to your mic.
I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. Received a phone call, and from the owners of the building, right before coming in here earlier, and they're still waiting on word from the insurance company. You know, they've got people asking them about fixing or repairing some other damages related to it, and, but I believe that there are, that that's going to have a lot of determination on how they proceed. And while it's, you know, my question to Mr. Holstein is, is it secure for the time being?
No, sir.
What does it lack being secure?
At this point, the engineer, his report, in his report, which you have in your paperwork, he said that the front of the building could fall at any moment. So, in my opinion, they still haven't stabilized the building. They have protected for fall protection of the building, thinking if it falls, it won't splatter into commerce or whatever happens. But they haven't stabilized the building. We still have a building with cold front joints that could fall at any time.
Let me rephrase my question. Is the, is the facility, is it protected to, just like we did on, you know, a couple years ago, we had a semi-similar instance, and there was the stuff we discussed, the scaffolding stuff, that was to, in case it was to fall. Is, do we have that safeguard put in place now?
No. Not for rehabilitation. We have a safeguard, because the building's going to fall, but we don't have the safeguard in the same manner as Ms. Leonard had her safeguard. Her safeguard was, I am, I am going to build the front of this building.
No, I'm talking about status, the current status of the, of the structure. You know, what are the purpose of the, of the blocks, then?
Well, the blocks are to barricade the building from falling into commerce.
To contain it.
To contain the building, possibly, possibly. We still have, we still have a building that is unstable, and we don't know how it's going to twist and turn when it falls.
Yep.
And so, at this point, I'm concerned that the building still can create a bunch of damage to downtown, other buildings, and it still has the ability to possibly hit the top of the barricade and still a brick fly over and hit a child walking down. I still feel uncomfortable with this building.
Brian, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, giving the owners options, and I love both of them. However, I also realize the dangers on our, on our city. If the city, you said something about eleven days. If they don't tear it down in eleven days, or put some sort of structure up there that keeps it from falling, and the city has to take responsibility of that building, again, and back to money, what would that cost us to do that? What sort of money are we, do you even estimate that that could cost us?
I don't have a good estimation. Typically, Trey goes into, basically asks for bids, and then we get the bids, and at that point, we have a good idea of what it's going to cost us to have this building tore down and removed. A building downtown, I'll just tell you right now, when you look at contiguous walls downtown, you're going to have to, once you tear this building down, you're still going to have steps to take for the next building right beside that building.
That's what the owner had told us at the agenda meeting, that this building had an effect on two other buildings, because of inside walls being created over the years, but the outside structure was, I took it to be one actual structure, sort of, kind of, right?
Basically, they're all separate buildings, but they're all just joined together. At one point, these buildings were all buildings, separate buildings.
Would that be our city, would that be our responsibility, or would that be their responsibility to secure those other buildings?
I would have to refer that question to Trey.
I, also, being, having a business downtown, I definitely understand the stress of this for them and for the city. You said that, that Betsy hired an engineer?
Yes, sir.
And that he said it was about to fall down? That, that was the?
He said it was still in serious stress. He said that, at any point, the front could take a swan dive into commerce. It's exactly, it's exactly words he said. And he said he does not have a timeframe. He didn't, he doesn't know.
Yeah, okay.
Tomorrow, maybe, maybe we have, maybe we have another thirty days, and we can bring it back. Maybe not.
But what if we don't? That's, that's the concern, is what if we don't? So what are we doing tonight? We're just discussing it?
We need to start the process.
Start the process, okay.
They would have eleven days to come in and sign a rehab agreement, or remove the, or remove the structure.
I'll make the motion.
If they want to, if they want to rehab it, they just come in, they have to pay a cash bond, and get building permits and all of that. We gave them sixty days on the barricades they put up. That was the most reasonable, you know, we're trying to help them out, too.
But now we're giving them eleven? So we're taking away those sixty days?
Well, you have a.
No, they still have the sixty, the sixty is still there. The eleven is to come in and sign an agreement and tell us what your plan is.
What their plan is.
Are you taking it down? Are you rebuilding it? What you're going to do?
So they don't have to make any actions within the eleven days?
But they have to have, they have to have a plan of action and come in and sign a rehab agreement. And then they've got a hundred and eighty days from then to.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have one more question for someone smarter than myself. If something were to happen to that building in this period of time, and damage was done to automobiles, or, you know, there's businesses across the street, who would be responsible for those damages? Would the city have any liability toward anything that happened, or where do we stand in that? I can see where other things could happen, other than killing a child.
I think ultimately, the longer the city delays, the more the case that could be made.
Yes.
Of gross negligence, which is, or almost an intentional, willful ignoring of a problem that's before it and doing nothing. As you know, that we have protection from torts, which is just your basic negligence, but now that this problem's come before us, and the language within the summary report that's given by the engineer did stress that the face of that building needs to be addressed. And so, the city, knowing that problem, should take some type of action to secure the public safety, which is kind of one of its main tenets.
Action quicker than sixty days?
I don't know how much quicker you can do it, because we try and balance the fact that, yes, there's two parts. Really, the part the city could do is order some type of, not only barricade, but scaffolding to ensure, something to keep the building temporarily, that face from, where it's certified that it will not fall until we can, until it's either going to be rehabbed or removed. And these, those are two separate issues. The barricade's one thing, but, I mean, the barricade, from what I can see, doesn't protect it from if that whole face collapses and swings outwards. I think the city has the legal right to order some type of temporary secure scaffolding or something to ensure that will not happen, and then that it can give the time to operate the second part, which is to solicit bids, or have the owner elect to rehab or remove it himself, or the city do it within its normal timetable. You're looking at the city removing it, not just removing it. There's probably asbestos in there, and it's going to have to be tested for asbestos, which you can have to do before you can solicit bids.
I bet it don't have.
Asbestos, you know, it's required to be removed and taken down before any demolition occurs. So, as much as we have, would like to rush it, there are just certain things we have to do to ensure we're compliant with all state and federal laws in removing this building.
Mayor, you got a motion in a second, don't you?
I don't think we have yet.
Yeah, I made a motion, Eric seconded it.
Okay. We do have a motion in a second, Tim. What was your motion?
To, to let Brian do, go with that seven, eleven days.
To require the rehab agreement?
Yeah.
But I guess, I guess before we make that motion, I want.
Let's go one at a time. Ready?
Before we make that motion, is there something else we need to add to this to make sure that we put that outside structure on up there that would protect those bricks and stuff from falling outward into that street? Is there something else we need to do to be prepared in case something were to happen? Since engineers, smart engineers, two of them, right? Two different engineers have said these things. And it concerns me that sixty days or something else, while vacations and other things take place, this seems like a really top priority for safety purposes to me.
Well.
I don't have an answer on what to do. It just seems like we should be doing something.
Ms. Harris, can I speak to that?
Yes.
There was some information in the engineer's report that said he could possibly temporarily secure that front, and then move forward in rehab. So, I don't want to, I don't want to leave that out of the discussion tonight, but, because the engineer did say, you know, we need, if they did want to rehab, revitalization is very important to a lot of people. And if they did want to rehab, there would be a way to temporarily stable that front of that.
Putting up some sub-walls or some kind of.
It would have to be done, and it would have to be looked at and designed by a building engineer, a structural engineer.
But we need to pass this tonight, so that you can get that process started.
There is, there is a way to secure the front temporarily, so that if they wanted to, at that point, then everybody could be comfortable with the front of the building. We have the engineer stamp, everybody, then it goes back to the engineer.
I have one more question about the barricades. What? How do, how do you know that they won't contain the debris?
I don't know that.
Okay.
No.
We don't.
There's no way you can.
But, that idea came from Barrett originally, and they recommended that they go six feet high, right? Brian had concerns, Kurt had concerns, we made them go an extra row, so it's eight feet high, and we went farther out than they were projecting.
That will help.
If the front of that building comes down like this, we're in trouble.
Yep.
If it falls like they predict, down.
Then you'd be okay.
The big concern was bricks blasting off the bottom of it, and that's what that wall is designed to.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, I just wanted to make sure how we came to that.
That's, that's, we went a little more than what they originally asked for, but a hundred percent safe. I don't think anybody's willing to.
That's all right, it's important.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just for public record, I guess, I have a conflict on this, because I have the control of the property to the north of it, and also, my office has been compromised, so therefore we will be billing the insurance for this, so I'll be, will be abstaining from this.
Thank you for that. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business item two, consideration of ordinance to prohibit fishing and swimming. Oh, in certain areas. We need a motion at some time?
Make a motion, we spend a rule, we tie it on, we show the explanation.
For one reading, or two?
One reading.
So you're.
I'll second that.
Okay, we're just suspending them on the first reading, then. Or you want to do it all in?
Do it all in one night, one time.
And Mr. George, is that how you understood it?
Yes.
Okay, first thing is, a motion to suspend the rules.
Can that be amended?
Can we amend that and do a motion to discuss?
Well, you can discuss after we vote on it.
No, you can't.
Not until you give us permission to.
Well, we've typically always done discussion. If we're talking about suspending all three, then we have.
Then you discuss and vote.
Okay, that's, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
We're suspending all three and do one reading, then.
Yes.
So.
This is already, this is already a law.
Okay. First, let's get this thing in motion. Call a roll on the motion to suspend. Mr. Wiley made the motion, and Mr. George was seconded. Mr. George.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Caruth?
No.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance prohibiting the fishing and swimming at certain areas of all parks of the city of Russellville, Arkansas, where I am penalty authorizing the enforcement of this ordinance by law enforcement officers for other purposes. This ordinance passed would prohibit the fishing and swimming at certain areas of all parks as designated by signs to be placed by, in the public works, as designated by the parks and wreck officials. Provides a penalty and also authorizes the police to enforce said ordinance.
Okay, counsel, again, we have a member of the public that would like to speak. Mr. Noest, step to the microphone, please.
Three minutes.
Five.
Five.
Two, two, two.
But start the timer when he leaves his chair.
Start the time right now.
Thank you, counsel, I'm Ron Noest. And first thing I knew about this was reading the paper that the ordinance was coming up, and so I came by this morning, got a copy of it from Kathy, looked it over, and I'd already looked at the, after I read the paper, I'd looked at the law, et cetera. Anyway, my concern was Illinois BioPark, which I helped get the funding for, et cetera. And I'd honestly like for you to table it till next month, because there's some conflicts that, and when we did our original proposal put together, and we got fifty or a hundred thousand dollars from game and fish, part of it was due to handicap access, which we built a handicap access ramp out there to provide, I mean, anyway, in our write-up, et cetera, which gave us more points. Mac will attest to that, that we got more points for putting in some of that stuff. And anyway, and there's some conflicts in the resolution, the way I read it, possibilities that would, would cause problems in enforcement. And, but I haven't had time, I've got to dig out the old, original grants that I wrote, and I'm afraid of losing possible other funding from game and fish if they don't, if they were to hold us to task on maybe what we said before, and so forth, so on. And I'm just not, didn't have time to look all that up. So, anyway, I'd like to meet with Mac on it, and some of the wording, in my opinion. And I don't know how you're going to.
No, I don't have any problem with the handicap out there, but I have, there's people out there swimming off the same thing, or fishing off it, and they aren't handicapped. No, I don't have any problem with the handicap out there, but I have, there's people out there swimming off the same thing, or fishing off it, and they aren't handicapped.
I'm not gonna argue or defend or condemn or whatever either one, I'm just concerned about what we had said before, and if we're at risk of, you know, maybe being crossways of game and fish, if they were to pursue something that we said before. And then there again, I don't know how you're gonna, well, there's several pluses and minuses in the ordinance that, that look difficult to enforce. And so, and anyway, the way it's worded. And I'd like, I'd just like to discuss it with, with Matt.
What makes you think you might lose some of your funding or something?
Pardon me?
With the park and wreck, you said you might lose some of the funding?
Well, no, I'm saying the game and fish, some of the proposals we put together to get the grant, some of the game, where else did they come from? Right, but no, but I meant, we got two or three different funding for that particular boat ramp, et cetera, and that project. And we wrote up different proposals. And I just want to make sure that, and we had a public hearing, and we talked about handicap access and so forth, so on. And, and I don't know what we, I might have to go back and look up some things to make sure, in my own mind, like I say, this...
So in thirty days, you'll be ready to bring back all your facts and figures?
Well, I think, yeah, I can, if I can dig up that stuff, talk to Matt about it, and there's some things that I think some of the wording may be unenforceable, in my opinion, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would, in light of other issues too, we had questions about law enforcement, and then how much time it would take on their part. There were several things that were brought up in discussion, so I would move that we table this.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion to table from Mr. Sims, the second, I believe, came through.
Phil's.
Boy, it was close. We can give Phyllis credit for that. Mr. Tripp, second.
It's Phil's.
Any other discussion?
Don't, don't I need to withdraw my motion before they can do that?
No. Well, what did you mo, what was your motion? Your motion was to suspend the rule.
Okay, my motion was to suspend the rule, okay.
And we gave you your way.
Okay, I'm okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Motion is to table. There's no need to do a roll call on that, is there?
No, that sounds good.
All in favor of table until next month, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ron, you did good.
Uh, item three, discussion to form an infrastructure committee. I've heard from Mr. Tripp, and I thought a great suggestion that we ride into our makeup of this committee, that there be some representative, in some way we'll, we need representation from at least one member from each of the four wards. I think that's good input. I haven't heard, I don't really have much feedback since Tuesday when this came up, so there's really nothing to do on this at this point, but I appreciate some of those, that kind of thoughtful input from the rest of you, whenever you want to.
Mayor, my question on that is kind of what, what's going to be the parameters, and what's going to be, what is this group going to be tasked to do, exactly? And what are the details?
Good question.
That's wide open, and that's why I hope that we'll all participate. I can see, you know, one example that I don't think comes up that often. Couple of years ago, when Staff Sergeant Wyatt was killed in Nashville, there was a ground swell to name a street after him. We got lucky, there was a street in our inventory that was not named.
Yeah.
It was a perfect street because it connected to Russell High School. So that one was pretty easy.
Yeah.
In that process, Kurt and I discussed, most of the time, the best way to handle it, the way a lot of cities have it, they have a committee, and they have a set, set of rules that they go through to evaluate that. I think this committee would be the right one to do that. I think, you know, helping Kurt with priority is, it's, you know, I would, I would think this would be an opportunity for the public to have more input in the priorities of the five-year plan. You know, it's a deal I learned from one of our previous engineers a long time ago, that, you know, it's helpful to get an opportunity to pre-sell your projects. You discuss these, and you bring it back. I'm, we need to decide how often they're going to meet, I mean, no offense to Kurt, but in his world, these things don't just sneak up on you, they develop over time. So does it need to be monthly or three months?
Who's, who's going to be in charge of the committee, Kurt?
I'm working on discussing, aren't we?
You'll have, well, the council liaison, for sure, needs to be on it. Kurt, I guess, will chair it.
Okay.
Or they can elect their own chair.
Whoopie!
Whoopie!
So let's work on that, give me some more input, and we'll try to form it up and come back, but don't really have anything solid for tonight.
Sounds good.
For discussion to amend the sidewalk plan, Mr. Tripp.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, we have, I've discussed this a time or two in the previous months. I don't have the, my exact details of this worked out, Mr. Jones and I have talked about this several times, and I think we're almost on the same page, or pretty much on the same page. We have, you know, a lot of need for sidewalks, we have a lot of need for sidewalk repair. For example, and I pass it on to Mr. Jones and the mayor, lady contacted me a few weeks back about a sidewalk on Honeysuckle. You know, so it's just a need, a way to, to look at a comprehensive, a look, a comprehensive approach for the whole city on where we see the need for a sidewalk, where we want, where we intend to put sidewalks. And then, and then as a second part of that, potentially incorporate that into our five-year master plan with streets, a ten-year plan with streets as far as, I'm sorry, with our subdivision code and our development code of where we require a developer to fully put sidewalks all the way around the block if they do any work on it, or two sidewalks in a neighborhood, you know, things like that. I would like to see first, a comprehensive plan put in as part of the five-year public works street master plan. And I don't know, Mr. Smith, does that need to be part of a resolution or ordinance, or how does that need to initiate?
You would, to do it as the five-year mastery, you could do it as a resolution to adopt it. Once he presents, once the plan's done.
If nobody has any objection to that, I would ask Mr. Trey to work on that for next month's meeting.
Do you have the plan, though? Do you already have the plan?
No. No, that would be to develop, Mr., for Public Works, Mr. Jones, to develop one, to include it, to be part of the ongoing five-year master plan, because just like the street master plan, the, the sidewalk master plan would probably change over time too, potentially. And again, just as, as a recent example, within the past two, three months, it was brought up that a place here in town, I think a locally-owned manufacturing company was going to do an expansion or remodel out on Far East Sixty Four, near Tyler Road. And our subdivision code or development code required them to put in sidewalks out in front of their business when there's not, not a sidewalk anywhere around. And we don't, that, Mr. Jones said that, he does not foresee needing a sidewalk out on Extreme Highway Sixty Four East.
I have a question, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, about that. I was actually told, this came up, and it was, I guess some people saw it in the media or whatever. And I was told that, that there was a business, and I guess this director, Mr. Jones, there was a business that was considering refacing their front. When they figured out that they would have to build sidewalks and all that, bring up to compliance, they decided to leave their structure as is. Is that true? Is that possible?
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in the way we have kind of addressed the sidewalk issue is if there's any, any change to the building footprint itself, that, that, that ordinance comes into play. Now, I think technically, if you read the ordinance, it probably, we're probably not even enforcing it to its fullest extent. I believe it probably, you know, it, it could be interpreted as any time a building permit is required, regardless of whether it's an interior remodel or, or, or what, that a sidewalk would be required. But we have, Brian and I have agreed to interpret it as any time there's a footprint change to the building structure itself, that, that a sidewalk is required.
Well, obviously, we don't want to discourage refacing structures and things like that, to make the whole area look better.
Now, I don't know that refacing a structure would, you know, if you're talking about just changing the facade of a structure, that, you know, in my opinion, wouldn't, wouldn't trigger it. I mean, but if, if, if they are, you know, if they're physically adding addition, you know, I, I think, I think the code reads bec, and I remember specifically asking this question when y'all passed it, if, you know, it refers to any building addition, is the way it's written. And, you know, I asked the question to, you know, not this council, obviously, there were other members on here at the time, but I asked the question, does this mean that if, you know, someone adds a five-square-foot addition to the building, that, that this would trigger the sidewalk ordinance? And I was, and the answer I got was yes. So that's, that's kind of the way we've been addressing it. That's if there's no existing sidewalk there. Like, they're not having to remodel a sidewalk. No, it, well, if there is, if there is, in, in a, it depends somewhat in, on the zoning of the property as well. You know, it's a little bit different, I believe, with residential versus commercial, but you know, if, if there's not a complete sidewalk, then they would have to complete the sidewalk at that point. You know, the, the, the option, I guess that, well, any appeal of that goes to the Board of Adjustments. The, the property owner does have the option of, and, and this is up to my discretion, as, as far as you know, making a payment in lieu of fee.
Oh, yeah.
And that, you know, that goes into a, I'm not sure exactly, I'm not sure exactly what account that goes into, but we use that. It would go into a fund that we would use to develop new sidewalks in other areas of town.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, item five, discussion concerning speed control on South Vancouver, Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Mayor, did anybody sign up to speak on this?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Been approached by a few people, concerns over traffic speed, et cetera, on South Vancouver. Have also been approached by others that say, don't slow traffic down too much, or it's too slow. I, I would ask that the administration and through, through the administration of Mr. Jones, to try to come up with some possible ideas or solutions to, to address this. I know this is a, no way to please everybody by any means, you know, some, some people will be happy, some people will not be happy. But if there is a, a concern there is, if there is a safety issue there of, of one ounce, then it's something that we do need to, to take a hard look at.
Is this just one street?
That's where my, that's where the concern has been brought to me.
Come over my place.
I'm, I'm addressing the concern that has been brought to me. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Eastman if he has...
Mr. Tripp, you can ask anything you want.
Oh, you're...
My name's Wayne Eastman, I live at six-ten Vancouver, and I represent several concerned citizens. I've been pushing this issue for over eighteen months. The city has done two traffic studies in the last six months. The last one was completed about a week and a half ago. And when you analyze the numbers, if you take out eight-hundred-and-thirteen entries that are zero to twenty, they put the box in my driveway. So if you're under twenty miles an hour on Vancouver, you're stopping to turn onto Muscadine, or coming off of Muscadine, or coming out of my driveway. So I took those out because nobody drives under twenty. But the study reveals that eighty-three percent of the traffic exceeds the twenty-five mile an hour posted speed limit. Forty-five percent exceeds thirty, and fourteen percent exceeds thirty-five. Up to fifty-one miles an hour, and the previous study was up to fifty-nine. So one out of seven vehicles is going over thirty-five miles an hour. Now, the city just put sidewalks there a while ago, a lot of people out there, a lot of traffic. I know there's all sorts of debates, what about my neighborhood, why this street? It's my street, it's my kids, it's my grandkids that are out there. Several months ago, a car came up in my driveway and destroyed my brick mailbox, and totaled his car. You think he was going twenty-five miles an hour? Kurt gave me this nice study, speed control in residential areas. And as some people suggested, stop signs, and according to this, if you read it, stop signs don't work. People speed up in between the stop signs and things like that. It does address the islands, gives different-sized islands, and it seems that's the most successful means to slow the traffic, so. Eighteen months, I'm not asking for a PUD, I'm not asking to build a Walmart, all I want is to enforce the law. We're a system of laws, we're exceeding it, it's, it's dangerous, and it needs to be addressed before something does happen. And we have to talk about city liability, having been notified for eighteen months. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for you. Would you object to speed bumps?
No, whatever it takes.
Well, hold on, let's not use the word "speed bump."
Not "speed bump," but we discussed this last meeting.
Speed table is the same thing what he's calling the island.
Okay.
There's two other places in town right now that where you have those, and that's the Sergeant Wyatt drive that the mayor just referenced, going from Sixteenth Street alongside the baseball field at Edge of Hickey back to the pool, and then out at the soccer complex. There's two, two examples there that you can look at. And to Mr. Brown's question about what about other areas, you know, if, you know, we could use potentially Vancouver, and I know some people will hate me for this, and I'm sorry, let me apologize in advance, but try, use that as a trial.
Yeah, I agree.
We don't know, we've never used one.
That's right. But no turner in it.
The section in here, you know, if you want, I'll give you, give you a copy, it's, they're called speed humps or bumps. And they have different sizes for what they call a hump, and different ones they call a bump. So, it says the humps are typically twenty-two inches long with a ten-foot flat section that can be used on collection roads, which is, I understand this is a collection road by definition? A study shows that these humps not only greatly reduce the eighty-fifth percentile speed on Main Street traffic, but it's also shown, unlike speed humps, the speed between the humps and the humps, and the humps are essentially the same before or after. Says a series of speed humps is more effective than a single installation.
I agree. Thank you.
I'd like to make an observation, if I could. If, if we open up the floor, or open up this speed hump proposal on South Vancouver, today it's the people on South Vancouver, and maybe rightly so, to say, people are speeding unnecessarily, or speeding too fast, whatever, on South Vancouver. Next week, it's the people on Detroit that have similar kids and grandkids, similar sidewalks, and they say, we need speed humps here, just like you did on South Vancouver. Then you'll have other people on Parkway, for instance, say, man, speeders are ridiculous on Parkway, and since you've done speed humps already on Vancouver and Detroit, it only stands to reason that we have speed humps also on Parkway, or wherever. Name a street that doesn't have some kind of speed control issue. What I would suggest is this. The speed limit on South Vancouver does not affect me, because I don't drive on South Vancouver, don't live over there. If I were to guess, I'd be pretty accurate to say that many of the speed issues on South Vancouver are by people that live over near South Vancouver. Well, I would, I would recommend that the police do what they're extremely well-trained to do, and to enforce the speed limits on South Vancouver. And when they give out tickets, that the people who get them, who live over there, say, thank you, Mr. Policeman, for doing your job, forgive me for speeding, and I'll gladly pay this ticket, and I won't fight it. Try that for thirty days, and see if you don't have a tremendous drop in the speed on South Vancouver.
Yeah.
Just saying.
That, that's like a...
Where are you going to draw the line and say, we'll, we'll do it on South Vancouver and not all over town? Where are you going to draw the line and say, we'll, we'll do it on South Vancouver and not all over town?
Oh, oh.
Okay, what? Way off of our rules of procedure here.
Eric.
Mr. Westcott has the floor.
Okay, he's through.
Are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, you've got a point there, it's valid, but I sit on my front porch on South Denver, and I count, I count ten cars that comes to that four-way stop sign, and there's not eight of them that stops. And I can show you all over town, it's the same thing all over town, and all the four-way stops that you want to go to. There's not eight out of ten of them that stops. So, you, you've got problems, you've got other problems besides speeding, you've got people that don't stop, and they can't cover it, they can't cover every stop sign in every street. So, we've got to come up with some kind of solution.
Well, the most effective solution, Kurt, alternative, you can just, well, you go ahead.
Well, I was just going to, maybe I went to answer any questions you all might have about these, uh, traffic, uh. Our speed control devices, you know, the, the speed, Mr. Eastman is, is correct, and I gave him a copy of a report that I had downloaded and read, and I've done a lot of research on, on speed tables, speed humps, um, I can't think of some of the other terms, there's like speed slots. And, you know, some of them are, some of them are reasonably effective, but they also have a lot of negatives as well. And, you know, one of the biggest negatives, and the people, and, and Mr. Eastman needs to be aware as well, is they do reduce property values. And, you know, they, they increase traffic noise, um, they, you know, some of larger vehicles, they, they do, you know, certain types of them, the speed slots are a little bit more accommodating to emergency vehicles, but the actual speed tables, you know, are detrimental to emergency vehicles. So, they're not, you know, they're not all positives. There's a reason why cities don't install these all over their areas, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, because if we put those in on Vancouver or any street, I can almost guarantee you that we are going to get as many, if not more, complaints about them as we are getting about the speeding right now. And the speed numbers, the, the speeding on Vancouver is, it's, it's typical, you know, we, we've run these on numerous streets in the, in the city, and this is what we see on just about every, every street in the city. I mean, it's, you know, they, it, it's typical as far as the speeding that we have on streets. There are things that can be done, not so well on existing streets, but, you know, when these streets are being designed, there are, you know, traffic calming, uh, devices that can be implemented into the street design. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I am adamantly opposed to doing, to trying to do anything with stop signs. I think that that's, you know, study after study has proved that that's totally ineffective. The, the speed tables do have some level of success, so.
Question.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question for Mr. Jones. Do we have the machine, or the equipment already for placing in a neighborhood or whatever, that as you approach, it shows your speed?
Yes, we do.
Or is that State Highway Department?
We, no, we have those. The, the police department has one, and then we've also, the, the police department has one that would be more appropriate for a neighborhood. We've got larger signs that would also show your speed, but I don't.
Are those effective? I mean, because I get my attention when I'm going.
Actually, they are, now, and you're talking about maybe a, you know, what, what would be, they're, they're fairly expensive, but there are actual, you know, permanent signs that.
Well, I'm not talking about permanent, because I'm agreeing with Mr. Westcott, that could get expensive if we go all over town with this. However, these folks have obviously got concerns, and, and I want their concerns heard. And at the same time, I know this young man back here, I have ridden with those guys, and they have a lot on their plate. Spend a shift with them, don't go two hours and ride with them, spend the entire shift, and you'll see what they actually do out there. And they don't have a lot of time to be taking them away from where there are real issues going on that are life and death, and going over here and stopping a speeder. Now, I realize that can be life and death, too. Please don't misunderstand what I'm saying there. But if we've got tools in place already, without going to the expense of the rumble strips and all, whatever we're talking, then, then, you know, move that over there. Step up patrol to a certain extent, and get people's attention, and hopefully, then it takes care of itself.
The sign, placing the sign temporary, I mean, while the sign's in place, I mean, I, I think it absolutely is effective. But as soon as you remove the sign, it doesn't take long, I don't think, for the, for the speeding to resume.
Well, maybe put a game camera on it or something, you know.
Kurt, well, I agree with everything I've heard here. If you put them on one street, they're on every street, because everybody speeds. But I was wondering, do you put those before when you had one on Vancouver?
Well.
They went around that one, I've seen it. People go around it, go around it.
Okay, first of all, let.
Do they have to be so stopped where they need to stop? Would, would they need to be placed so they have, right before a stop sign?
No, no.
In the middle of the street, or where are they?
No, the, what was placed on Vancouver was actually more of, and, and it was a little, it was a lot more aggressive than what I thought it would be when we, when we bought the thing and actually placed it out there, but it was designed to be a rumble strip. It was designed to, to alert the driver that there was a stop condition there at that intersection. We, you know, we had, that was not the intent of that. You don't put speed bumps on approaches to stop signs typically. I mean, you put them where the speeding is going to be occurring typically.
In the middle of the street somewhere.
Yeah, in the middle, mid-block somewhere. These were not, these were, these were simply to alert drivers to a stop condition. And that, and you're absolutely right, they were driving around, and we, you know, we took them up. The, the, the devices that we're talking about right now would be, they would be much less aggressive.
Do they go all the way across the street?
Yes, they would go all the way across the street. They would, they would have a, you know, there's a couple of different options. One would actually be speed slots, where you can actually drive between them and avoid the.
No, don't do that, they'll figure it out.
No, hear me out. But they, they, they slow you down, studies of slow, speed slots, I think is what they're, what they're called. And studies have shown that they do slow traffic. The, the other would be a speed table, which would be, you know, a gentle slope up to a level plateau, and then slope back down. And, you know, if we did do something like that, that would probably be my recommendation. You know, and there would be other measures that we would, you know, we would do some striping and, and pavement markings to, to, you know, alert the driver that they were approaching one of these. But they can, they can be designed in such a way that, you know, they would, you know, they, they would affect, if you place them, you know, frequently enough, they would effectively reduce speeds. I mean, studies have shown that.
Okay, something else I want to ask, just, because I, I, I hate speed. I, I, where I live on Skyline Drive, it's a passing lane. Only police on Skyline Drive, it's a drag strip, boom. Okay, but, you know, I think most of us, not me, but a lot of other people, just sort of think in her head, if the speed limit's twenty-five, I can drive thirty-five, and there's no problem. Now, is, is it, is it psychologically better to put up a sign that says fifteen miles an hour to make them drive twenty-five?
Well, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because let's, because that would, that addresses, you know, Vancouver is signed twenty-five. Typically, and I didn't.
Skyline says thirty, I think, but they drive fifty.
Well, thirty, if a, if a street, if a residential street is not signed, it's the, I mean, the speed limit's thirty miles an hour. And, and what happens a lot of times, and I don't know if this is what happened on Vancouver, because it, it was signed before my time, but it, you know, typically, when citizens start complaining about speed, and they ask for speed limit signs, we typically go out and we'll put up twenty-fives. And I have not, I've had requests, but we have not signed any streets lower than twenty-five.
Can we experiment with one on Vancouver?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna get, I mean, there's already a, there's already a large number of people that think it's signed too, too slow. And I think if you sign it slower than that, and then actually start enforcing it, you're gonna get a lot more complaints, but.
Would it be safe to assume that if you had a police officer out there three days, five days a week writing tickets, people are going to get mad, okay? And I'm probably going to regret saying this, but today's society, the easiest and quickest thing to do is complain. So, we're going to get complaints, no matter what we don't do or what we do do. But in the, on the side of, of public safety and caution, and, and welfare of, of youngsters, because that is a heavily, you know, younger area, is it not worth trying something? And that's what I'm, that's what I asked the administration through the mayor and Mr. Jones to do something.
That, that, I think it'd be more complaint than it would be this way. I think we need a committee to study this a little bit, and I think we need to do something.
Let's just do it. I think it's for that, uh, transportation committee that we started talking about earlier. Would fall under their jurisdiction, would it not?
That can be one of their, their job duties.
But we don't know when that's going to be in place, and I know Mr. Eastman, as well as others, would like to have something, you know, addressing this. We just need to expedite that committee. The mayor's been wanting it for some time. Mr. Jones, how long would it take for you to put something in play, to, you know, to, to, whether, whether it be a table on island, whatever the right word is, or a, a, you know, rumble strip or anything, to do anything, what, what timeframe?
Well, I mean, it depends on, if we did, I've, I've got some pricing on some, some prefab, you know, rubberized speed tables, and I priced four of them, and it was about, the cost, well, it varied depending on the design, but somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
Say what?
That's for a rubberized road.
That would be something that we could, that we could put down and take back up. We could build something out of asphalt that wouldn't be as nice. That would be considerably less than that, probably.
Mr. East, would you mind stepping to the microphone? We want to get your comments on record. I think it's working, it's just. It, it, it doesn't work quite as well if you turn your face away from it. Well, Chief Humphrey's told me on multiple occasions that the most effective way is to have a group that periodically can deploy to an area that's having speeding problems, two or three units, spin them out there for two or three hours. In fact, we did that here before it got to where we just don't have enough officers to take care of the job they already have to do.
Yeah, we're down to that enough.
That would have been the best option, but apparently, from the discussion earlier tonight, we're not going to, uh.
We'll think about it, we'll be.
Yeah, maybe y'all ought to think about it. Do, do we want to do asphalt, or do we want to pay people? And y'all tell us. Or do you want, do you have something you want to do tonight, Mr. Tripp?
I would just ask you and Mr. Jones to take care of it internally.
You want me and Mr. Jones to take care of it?
Yes, sir. That's what I'd ask for you to do, and then we'll go from there.
We'll go from there. Anything else on this item?
No, sir.
Item six, public hearing. I believe there's a correction in your packets from tonight, typo or something, if you want to refer to that.
Is that an ordinance, you have to suspend the rules?
Yes.
We do.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
We can do that after.
Rebuttal, long with short explanation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wiley, would you go again? Would you repeat it?
Make a motion to suspend the rules, rebuttal, long with short explanation.
Second.
Second, Mr. Westcott, now we'll do the public hearing, right?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
We've got to vote on that motion.
We can do it either before or after.
Let's vote on that motion to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Trey, go ahead and read it.
An ordinance vacated a portion of fifty-foot right-of-way of East M Street running between Parker Road and Jackson Avenue, between blocks A and C, Gene Rindfro subdivision to the city of Russell, Public County, Arkansas, and for other purposes. This ordinance, if passed, would vacate the aforementioned right-of-way at the aforementioned places in the city of Russellville.
All right, we'll declare the public hearing on this open. Does anybody would, would care to speak on this item? Nobody?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, I'm Paul Stitt, since I made a, I wanted a petition for it. A lot of my brother, you know, nineteen forty, farm master on Parker Road, and unbeknownst to me, the, the, lay the land, the property is stagnant to the street, so that Eastwood actually goes halfway through my driveway, and, uh, the cost to, to complete that street would be very, very high as compared to the benefit of it. And, uh, there's actually a waterway that goes through there, and, uh, people from, from the back part of the neighborhood, they, they use that, uh, through there, and it's kind of dangerous, and it's litter, and not as drug activity, and they're cutting through my yard, and, uh, that's the reason for my competition for this.
Is your intention to put up a fence or something?
Yes, sir, and actually, there was a memorandum of agreement for the fence. I found this out when I was doing my study for it, and, uh, the city attorney said that he would still honor that, but I wanted to make it permanent, and also give my neighbors benefit of, of having that. He's, like, dated, and, uh, everybody seems to be in agreement so far. So, I would, uh, give consideration.
Thank you, and stand by. Anybody else from the public? We'll close, declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
I'll do that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Kurt, you got any concerns? You just had that, look.
Well, the recommendation from the planning commission was to, was to, uh, was to, you know, prove the closure of the right-of-way with the condition that it revert to a drainage and utility easement, because there is a large drainage way that moves through there, and there's also the possibility in the future of wanting to extend water and sewer through that area. And I believe that was the, you know, that was the condition of the, uh, or the recommended condition of the planning commission. I don't know if y'all have that or not.
Yeah, I'll put that in my motion, too, Mayor.
I believe I heard you speak at the planning commission, that you don't have an objection with that, utilities, okay, or right-of-way, easy. Okay, so, again, Mr. Wiley, you're, state your motion with the way you want it now.
Make a motion that we close the alley, but we give the easements to the, to say, to the utilities.
Check.
I believe that was Ms. Carew, second. Any other discussion? Call the roll. Oh, we don't have to, we got, yeah, we do.
Um, Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Ms. Carew?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Item seven, resolution to issue a special use permit. Item seven, resolution to issue a special use permit, forty-four eighty East Main. Motion, Mr. Wiley?
Second.
Second, Mr. Westcott?
Yeah.
Discussion? In that case, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven is approved. Item eight, consideration of confirmation for Planning Commissioner Karen Yarborough to serve as the Board of Adjustment member.
Motion.
This is the planning commission nomination. I believe I heard motion, Mr. Wiley, second.
Brown.
Ms. Brown, okay, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item eight is approved. Item nine, consideration of resolution requiring rehab agreement or removal.
Didn't have a... Address. Address on it.
It's, it's Aiden Levin's...
It's...
Aiden Levin's what?
Aiden Levin's South Denver.
South, yeah, the, the...
Denver.
Denver.
Oh, Denver, oh, that's the, that's the one down below me, motion.
Is that the bar?
Yeah, that's a motion, yeah, that's the one that burnt down, there's all, all the things left is the brick walls.
Second. Brian, are you still here? Yeah. Is that the one, it's, uh, there may be an issue, uh, insurance issue, do we need to do something special, or can we just, is there an owner, or can we go?
We have not found anybody.
But, a bank owns it in Tex, somebody in Texas, a bank owns it down in Texas somewhere.
And no concerns, nobody's called.
Any special concerns, Mr. Smith?
But it's gonna fall, it could fall on somebody, though, the way it's...
So we put it on a rehab agreement, eleven days, nobody responds, sayonara. Okay, everybody understands?
Yep, got you.
Did we get a motion?
Yes, motion.
I seconded it.
Second, Mr. Westcott, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item nine is approved. Item ten, ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty-two oh-six, the old, older ordinance.
Motion to suspend the rules, read one time by title only with short explanation.
Let's hang on just one second, Mr. Smith, we have, do we have...
Do we have two ordinance for that?
Yes, those two.
Two ordinance?
Yeah, this, uh, after speaking to the municipal attorney earlier this week, uh, concerning the, uh, federal lawsuit with, uh, PPP, uh, they had, and they did put this in writing later after I contacted municipal attorney, if we, if we repealed our, our older ordinance, our current one, uh, then they said they would dismiss their current lawsuit without any fees, costs, or monetary damages, and, uh, it would end the suit, but it would not bind the city from any other type of actions in the future, so I think at this time, just to, uh, end that lawsuit without any type of monetary penalties against the city, potential, that is, uh, I think we could just, should do this now and, and go forward from there on.
That's two ordinance together.
Yes, it says both.
Okay.
It's repealing.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt.
We need to suspend, Mayor.
Yes, I do, we do.
Yeah, he did a second.
Anybody wanna suspend, or y'all...
Motion to sus, motion to suspend.
Let's get this one at a time, who made the motion?
Mr. Westcott?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wiley, all in favor of the motion to suspend?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? All right.
An ordinance repeal, an ordinance number is twenty-two oh-six and twenty-two seventy-five, for other purposes, this would repeal both of those ordinances, uh, if it's adopted.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Ms. Carew?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
You done, Mayor?
No, sir, we're asking for the emergency clause.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you need to call the roll on that?
I'm believing so.
Uh, you probably ought to, keep it all the same.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Carew?
Yes.
Mr. Wa... Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
We're adjourned.
[inaudible]